Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Your first name? Bill? Bill? I'm Bill O'Donnell.
This is Bill Paris.
This is Bill Paris. Oh, Bill Paris.
Energy Committee Chair.
K A R I S.
Hi. Yay. Minute takers setting down names.
Not this, not today.
Minute taker. He's got your name.
Because it's needed, loser.
It's official meeting.
This is a tent. Oh, yeah. I just wanted to go on a hike.
Okay. There you go. That's where we're heading. Do you want to call us or do you already did that? Yeah, we're here. We're in order. Okay. So, for those who don't know me, I'm Dan Boggs, I'm the Assistant Town Manager. And Mike's gonna film us, so hi, Mike.
Oh.
So, we're gonna take a quick walk on a portion of the rail trail, which begins at Bennington Station and runs all the way to Emma Street, which is the road along on Northside Drive, right in front of Dunkin' Donuts. So, that's the first section of the rail trail. We'd love to see some more, but that's for the future. Just a little history on this. This trail has been over 25 years in the making. Finally getting done. It should be done by contract by October, hopefully a little earlier. What you won't see on this walk is what's called the runaround track, which is a railroad track up at the old Johnson Control Site that's behind the Subaru dealership. And part of this project was to build a track for the railroad so that they could bring locomotives from the front of an engine to the back, so it's basically a turnaround for them. And that actually cost way more than the trail did. But since this is the railroad right-of-way, that was the price we had to pay to do this path. It was funded 90% by state and federal money, 10% by local money. The portion of the path from Bennington Station to essentially the Orchard Road section, which is by Molly Stark School, will be paved. Beyond that, it will be a Sherpak surface to Emma Street. We may eventually pave that, but that's not part of the initial grant that we're executing at this point. Before we get started, any questions about the trail or anything you want to know about the history? And then we can certainly ask questions as we go too. But if there's anything that you want me to answer now before we get started, I'll certainly happy to do that. Anyone? Okay. So, let's get started.
Yes. Let's do it.
We're gonna walk down the trail.
Paris said he thought they were gonna pave it.
You'll hit the first half anyways. That's alright, once you're on this surface.
So, that's the beginning, right there.
Yep, that's the beginning of the trail, right there. We will eventually connect that portion of the trail, that trailhead to the downtown pathway. We're not quite sure how we're gonna do it, but it ends, as you know, in the park across the way from Bennington Station. But we did get a grant also to renovate and improve downtown pathway, the Walloon Sack Pathway. And part of that improvement will be connecting to this path. So, you'll be able to take this path all the way right into downtown. And obviously, folks from downtown can take it right to here and beyond, up to Northside Drive. We hope that it will, well, we know it will eventually connect with the planned Ninja Path, although that's the current name. We're thinking about renaming it. We'll talk about that tonight. So, this pathway, along with downtown pathway and the now currently named Ninja Path, will take you all the way from downtown to Northside Drive, to Bennington College, to North Bennington. So, it will be a nice, fairly easy way to get from both of the villages.
Just give us a list of who's allowed to use the walkers, cyclists.
Cyclists, skateboarders, rollerbladers.
Strollers.
Strollers. The select board can limit those uses, but as far as what's legal on a pathway like this, it's not for motorized vehicles. Even electric bikes will be allowed, as long as they're considered bicycles and not motorcycles. There's a certain speed. I think it's up to 30 miles per hour that electric bike can go. It will be allowed to go on this. Unless the select board decides otherwise. If we have problems, we can limit that. As of now, we're not planning on plowing it, although that may change if people are wanting to be plowed. It is wide enough to be plowed with a regular pickup plow truck. Although the end of this will be Sherpak or gravel, not paved, so we may not plow that until we get that paved. Again, that will be for future decisions, whether we want to pave that. I personally hope we do, but some people really like the gravel surface. This should be a runner, so you can always run on the edge with this gravel.
So, Dan, what's the timing on the paving of it?
So, Markowski is the prime contractor. They are essentially done with their work, except for the crossings. So, they are waiting on the paving contractor. You may have heard, it's very difficult to get subs to do what you want. So, the big things they need to have done is the paving and the deck on the railroad trestle, which if we have time, we'll get to see. But that is all subconsultants, subcontractors, so they're essentially notified their contractors. They're ready for them to come in and do the work, but they're not ready yet. They haven't come in yet and done it. So, Markowski is on time, but they're having trouble getting their contractors in. Their deadline is October, so they're still within the contract period. But we'd love to have them done sooner, but we'll see what happens.
Is there gonna be a place where people can park if they can't just start as a walker?
They could park here, they could park at Bennington Station. There'll be anywhere along the, and there may be other spots up there.
If you're at the other end and you want to cut this way, where would you park?
So, there isn't really any dedicated parking on that end at this point. It's a good point that we'd like to try to address, but it isn't part of this contract. It's kind of an end at an odd location. We had hoped to have it go across the Fertis Brook, which is essentially adjacent to the Orchard Village, formerly Applegate Apartment Complex. But we ran into some troubles with wetlands permitting, and they wouldn't allow us to make a connection from the railroad right-of-way to the Applegate, Little Orchard Village Apartments, even though there's an existing informal path there. So, we had to end at Emma Street. We hope to change that in the future and have it go all the way to Orchard Village, because it'd be nice for those folks to have a good connection. So, we're gonna start walking, and we can ask questions as we go. So, we're gonna go till maybe 5:35 or so, and then we'll turn around.
Dan, how long is this section of the trail?
About one and a half miles from there to Emma Street. So, you can get a nice three-mile run in if you go in and come back.
On a day like today.
And we could do a 5K. 5K race.
Instead of 25 years, it's because of...
The railroad, trying to get the railroad to agree to it. So, eventually, we just had to convince the place to pay for the runaround track, which bought a lot of money. Yeah, that was well more than...
Well, there's no track.
You mean, yes, there is.
There'll be a track.
There'll be a track.
Right now, there isn't. They put in everything but the track. That's one of the subcontractors waiting for it. I mean, they took the track, but the sub-basis now, I believe the ties are down. And then we usually have to put the rail in.
Well, where will this train go? We don't have any trains coming here.
We have made that argument many times.
In North Bennington, that, all that line is still an active line out to North Bennington. That's still an active line.
The spur into Bennington, it hasn't been used for decades. And it was just, if you have had any dealings with the railroad, they're very protected. Yeah, they will, they won't give up anything unless they get some... That's how they work. They don't have any, there's no necessity for them to respond quickly or leave a rational. We've had to deal with that for a long time. Persistence paid off. I didn't start this project, but I'm a lucky one to finish it.
Were you born when it started?
You remember Helen?
Oh, Helen White started this?
Well, she was, I know she was on staff when it started. Mike got done with it. It's gone through many iterations in the last 25 years. Originally, it was thought of as a rail with trail. We're gonna have a rail beside Bennington Railroad. Lots of cost, it was difficult, and crossing issues. Eventually, the railroad agreed to let us take the railroad right-of-way. We had to take the runaround track.
With the runaround, yeah.
What will happen if intersections like this stand?
No, there'll be at least a, you know, like a crosswalk type thing on the side. I should have looked at the details. There'll be bollards in the center. All of that will be either cleaned up by the town or Markowski. We're just trying to get a price to them. That was all right-of-way. They piled it up.
People that don't...
They're piling it up at different locations. It's picked up at some point for the trail.
And actually, that's decent salvage.
Will there be any lane striping?
There isn't in the plan.
I mean, we could strike it.
I've never seen that.
I don't know if it would make sense.
I would like it not to look like a road.
Yeah.
I would like it...
It's just, yup. So, the interesting about this, you get to see kind of the back of some buildings you've probably never seen before. Actually, it's a pretty interesting building. That's the former CVS building. It's now a garage, but it's pretty interesting. Get some glimpses of the monument. And just to kind of orient us, that's Benmont Avenue over there. And that's North Street over there. So, we're kind of going right through the two travel corridors.
Right. It feels like we're outside of town.
It does, even though you're right in this little lane.
Even though we're right here.
And there's shade.
I know.
Ah, that's better.
Way better.
So, this is one of my favorite facades on the trail. You can look at the cool windows, think about, you had balconies up for that. Really awesome. It's a neat old building.
That is a wonderful old building.
So, it's the, what's it called, the text design or whatever?
Yeah, so it goes up that way.
Yeah. You'll see it when you go by. I think it's from text design, right next to this scissors.
Oh, yeah.
All industrial.
This used to be Keith Martin's building. It's now Silverdale. But that's a pretty cool building too. You can see the way the lines are.
Is there, is there any fencing? Or could you literally just like jump off and get to Tasty Freeze?
Well, you're gonna be, you're gonna see Tasty Freeze.
Yes, you're gonna be able to get to Tasty Freeze.
We integrated Tasty Freeze into the pathway, because they were very excited to have that up. But most of this, there isn't fence. When you get up to the limited access highway on Route 7, there is fencing. And you'll see that if we have, if we have time.
Right in fact, that, I believe that oak tree.
Yup.
I think that's the one that has the rail that goes right up. It grew right over the top of the rail. And I had talked to one of the contractors, basically saying, "Make sure you save that tree." Cut the rail, don't cut down the tree.
Yeah, that tree's a good one.
It's a lovely tree.
There's a few of these we want to get taken out.
Absolutely. This thing right here is not worth it.
That's not a good one, because it's dead.
Nope. But this oak... Nope, it's wonderful.
Nice basket, so...
They did.
Yeah. So, we do have an easement that will connect this trail to Benmont Avenue and right across from Leonard Street. So, that will be one of the first connections you'll see. It will allow for that neighborhood to get access, easy access. Yeah. And the nice...
We are sold.
The folks that are operating this now are very excited about this. They're very cooperative, and they even offer that eventually, we'll have a right-of-way through here, so we can connect to Deer Park and Alex and the Heights. We'll be working on that too. So, you kind of see this, it's a backbone to our system, and then we're gonna have arms and legs off of it. So, it's really kind of the key to the whole, the whole vision for a pathway system.
Do you think it would be okay with these folks, if somebody parked here and just started on the path?
Uh, I wouldn't offer that. They have pretty limited parking. Well, you could park in the Deer Park. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Or start and end with ice cream.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Where can you get ice cream?
Or you could park in the...
Or Tasty Freeze is closed. It's only open a few months of the year.
You could also park in the State Office there. There is a walkway.
Is there a plan, time for this sign?
Uh, we hope to do it in the spring. Actually, we initially hoped to do it in the fall, but it's probably not gonna happen, so I don't want to...
This had four complete lines.
Just the Benma Connector. We do have the easement already, so it's not an issue of access. It's an issue of getting enough resources and time from our highway department to do it. And they're pretty booked Maple Street right now. Yup. And then they're gonna be doing Franklin Lane, so we don't, we think we're probably gonna run out of time this year. Yeah. They easily kind of, we want to make it more formal, but...
I mean, even for like PE class.
Yeah.
Yup. This is a three-mile run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is all the former Benmont Fancy Papers Mill area that's been demolished. Sort of.
Dan, will there be any lighting along the pathway?
No. Just not, not likely to happen. Keep frank. The Ash Bullock isn't loaded, the furniture shelves are lit, so it's not a thing for these longer... It was right in town, like we do with the Walloon Sack Pathway. And we'll be getting more lighting.
Yes, that's the one that says lots of safety.
And in the summer, light... This is so cool now.
Isn't it pleasant? I mean, look, we're right there, and it feels pretty safe. You know, you're not, you're not so close that it's uncomfortable. And again, this will all be paved, so it'll be easygoing for a bicycle. Get a little glimpse of the old Benma, I think we're parking lot there.
You can't even see that from Benma, can you?
No. Well, you could, you can kind of see it's all clearing, but there's trees in front of it.
The leaves lost.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a walker on it already.
And it's never, I mean, it would be impossible to really close it. But is it like a dawn-to-dusk thing? Is that the goal?
That's really gonna be, that's really gonna be up to you folks. We are not proposing any closing times, but it's, it is town land now. It's town control. So, you guys can make those decisions if there's any problems, any issues.
This is where I do green upgrade.
So, you can see, Gene, there's a little, there's a fence right there. Just barely see it. That's all. That extends along this area. You wouldn't, there's no really pedestrian points there anyway.
This is so much better than walking down the road.
Even if you had a nice wide lane, which you do, it still feels really uncomfortable, whereas this feels completely safe, because it is.
So, with a bicycle in a basket, you could ride this trail all the way from the center of Bennington out to Price Shopper, Walmart, Hyatt, all those. And even on the Ninja Trail, get over to...
Bennington College entrance.
Yeah.
Yup. We're working on the best way to connect this trail to the Ninja. We're gonna show you one place that we'd like to make a connection, and then we won't make it to the other places. But there's a couple other places if you get past the trestle that are good candidates as well. And I'll explain the one up here and the challenge if you have with that one. Kind of a unique history on that.
Well, this is where it used to cut through. I thought it was in Franklin Lane.
So, you know, so it was an old, it was a town right-of-way. And we, you know, the formal process of throwing up a right-of-way. So, when you throw it up, it immediately goes to the adjacent property owners. So, splits the right-of-way right down the middle. So, they got this, we're at the town property for nothing, and we're trying to negotiate a purchase back. So far, we haven't had any success, but maybe once they see the level of activity, they'll relent. But I don't know.
It will be winterized, but it'll probably not be...
The white rocks?
Yeah.
So, this used to be the old ideal fence property here, San Francisco. I've got a garage and a contractor shop in it, but kind of neat old buildings that if you wanted to have a restaurant or cafe, could face right out on the path, which would be kind of fun.
Will this fence stay in there?
It can be removed. It's not, it's not being proposed to be removed. I don't, to be honest, I don't know if it's on railroad property or private property. If it's private property, then you can't touch it without their permission. If it's railroad, then we could probably remove it. Yes.
Kerry Wilber over once they paved it, and he's gonna ride his regular, well, he doesn't have a pedal, but he has, he has a coaster bike to go on.
Got a little connection, informal connection there.
He loved his glider.
It's like a, um, a name on the ride.
And you can get to job lots as well. Yes, you can. You could go up here and cut over. Because you can get on the kosher path and connect over. Could also go up to the middle school from here, go kosher, high school. It's our property. We'll need to maintain it. Yeah, I mean, because it's wide enough, and we're gonna have collapsible bollards, people can get in their truck and throw stuff in the back as they go through. So, we'll probably go through every, every bit, every, you know, week or so. So, let's take, let's stop right here, because this is the old...
Stop in the shade.
Yes. This is the old Route 7 right-of-way here. It was thrown up several decades ago. So, the property owner to the left and the property owner to the right now own in fee, or that portion of the property was thrown up. That's a technical term, actually, believe it or not. And we've attempted to negotiate over the past 20-plus years an access through here, because it'd be nice to connect to Hunt Street, which then connects to the Ninja Trail, et cetera. And we have on our Benmont Avenue plans, which we'll talk about tonight, we have a crossing plan there that would make it safe for folks to cross. Go from here to Hunt Street to the Ninja Path. This is one of the ways that they could connect easily to the Ninja Path. So far, we haven't had any luck. We'll see. I mean, it is an option to take it by eminent domain. I know that's not always a favorite option, but it may become enough pressure from folks that really want to go through there. So, we'll see what happens, but we really, we'd really like that connection to happen eventually, sooner rather than later, because it makes a really nice connection to the Ninja Path.
I wonder, once this is done, it'll become really evident how fabulous it would be.
Now, the properties may decide to close it off, and that's their option.
Or, or they could see this as customers coming into the Compton Old Store over there to get, they could think of it that way. They could.
So, we'll see. We're gonna, we're gonna keep positive about that, but that's definitely a goal of ours to make that connection.
That makes sense.
Well, it makes even more sense that we gave it to him.
I know. And then we get to pay for it.
On the way back.
I think a donation is...
It is one of those great dilemmas.
And we'll talk about tonight our plans for this intersection. Completely redo this intersection and make it safer for everybody. We're closing up curb cuts. We'll show you that plan tonight. Mark will show you that. I'll let Mark do the talking tonight, because I think we're talking now, at least mostly talking. So, we are coming up to the trestle right about on time, so that's good. It is crazy, crazy hot out, isn't it? I was talking to a gentleman.
About four hours ago.
Yeah, that's true. I was talking to a gentleman who used to live in Georgia, and since we both lived in Georgia, we know that this is very much like Georgia weather. So, these, I'm just gonna point these out. These are pretty unique features. We think that these were originally the abutments for the bridge. And we're thinking, I've been talking to a local sculptor about maybe doing some artwork on these, because they're just really unique. But he says they're not the best stone for carving in, but he might be able to get some, something out of it.
These are just incredible here. The tool marks on here are really cool.
But they're just scattered all along here on both sides.
Yeah, they would just be spread along the right-of-way, because who wants to haul it away?
Why pay to move them too far?
Exactly.
Looks like leftovers from the monument.
Yeah, doesn't it?
Pieces that were cut out.
Just rolled them down. It's a good way to start.
I mean, the texture looks like...
It is, it does look very close to it, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's got that hammered finish.
It's not marble. I know that.
Now, it looks, I mean, it looks like right here.
Maybe bluestone? I don't know.
Has more of that, let's do it.
Alright, so we're coming up to what I think is one of the coolest features of this path, is the old railroad trestle. This deck will be redone. They're waiting on the subcontractor to do this work, but it's ready to go. And it...
Do we know the name of the subcontractor?
We don't. We don't. At least I could find out, though, but Markowski is the general. So, yup. So, you can see from here, Northside Drive, Kosher Drive, and there will be a signalized crossing there. People will cross over in front of the CVS, and it will continue on all the way to Emma Street. And it's a much different, different experience. It's very rural. There's, you can't really see any buildings. And you just feel like you're in the middle of the wilderness, so it's kind of cool. And then you pop out right in Emma Street. There'll be a path, a pedestrian path all the way to the groundabout. And sidewalk network is just gonna get into the Ninja Path or go to the stores on Northside Drive, et cetera.
This is great. Alright, Helen White's name has to be on something out here. Yeah, this is fantastic.
Right. Do we know when this trestle was built?
Was built? Well, it does. I think it's stamped right in here, proof.
It should be.
1908, according to Tom. He can read that better than me.
Which is why we're not walking on it.
Yes. Although I've walked on it several times. It's very safe, except for the ties.
Yeah, the ties could be a little...
But the structure, the structure is very safe.
So, what will happen if we pull through?
So, they'll remove all the ties, and then they'll put a new deck down. And I can't remember if it's a wood deck or a concrete deck, but it'll be a new, smooth surface that folks will be able to go on, and it'll be seamless from trail to trail. And again, so this is paved all the way up to just past the CVS, where it hits Orchard Road right by Molly Stark School, and then it will go to a Sherpak surface, which can be paved in the future, just not part of this contract.
So, Dan, is there any opportunity to put sort of holes in it so you can see the, so you can see the river as you go across?
Probably not. Probably not. I think that's a really cool idea. But structurally, I don't think we're going to do that.
Putting holes in the trestle.
But you know, folks will be...
But it would be lovely to be able to see it as you cross.
It would be able to see as you cross.
Oh, maybe there can be, maybe there can be a...
It can be like a lookout on each side or something.
Yeah, something.
This is a really nice spot to go dipping in the lake.
Do a little step up.
Yeah, that would be cool.
I think that's a better option than cutting.
I don't care how it happens, just so you can see.
I understand that. I get it. I think it's a good idea.
I don't know if it does. That's a good question. It should because of the way it comes in.
Is anybody going to put a guardrail here so nobody spikes over?
I don't know if there's a guardrail or not, but we can certainly look into that.
Well, we have plenty of rock that could be moved back to become edging.
So I'm not a big fan of fencing everybody off from everything that could possibly hurt them.
Yeah, you're on here at your own risk.
If it's, if it's a real risk, then we might consider it.
I wouldn't go close to the edge there, but stupid kids could.
If I were a kid, I'd go right down in the water.
Yeah, I guess.
They do that now.
I've been to the Grand Canyon and the edges don't seem to have rails.
Oh, but it actually looks like it's better accessed from the other side anyway. So, I mean, if you were coming from that direction, it's less of a... As a child?
No, just recently to look at what's going on underneath. And it's not too hard if you're...
Are we keeping the meeting open all the way back?
I would imagine.
Okay. Just check.
You know, Dan, a reason to not... An argument to not plow it is then you could snowshoe and ski.
And that's the thing. That's why we haven't, we haven't committed to do that. Especially not on the other end because it's going to be a gravel surface.
Right. That'll be...
But I think it's going to be dictated by folks, by the users. If there's a, if there's a plan or to plow it, then it would be easy enough for us to do it at the end of all of our plowings.
If you take a look at, particularly the triangular ones. And this, that's all clearly been touched or used in the past.
I'm the smartest one. Is that short? I'm the dumbest one because I have lots of shorts. I also left my house in Long Island. I left my house in Long Island, but I found one upstairs. Said I will return. We're talking about our perennial...
All right, but the only things we can talk about tonight is the line here.
I'm going to see him.
Oh, John's still laying there. That's good. I don't think his former employee still runs it.
Yeah, but the former is the former.
But I know he hasn't done it. But I do expect dog walkers in my neighborhood.
I think dog walkers do that.
It's very safe.
Well, there was someone that wanted to donate.
Yep, I spoke to the railroad, so we'll be able to go back. Most, most of them. Not at the same time. I mean, we may put some at the trailheads. If it makes sense, but not... Not long.
Not long.
But even this surface, this is roughly then what will be further down. Because up to the Sherpack, when she's contracted, it's going to be, most of the time it'll be very close to pavement. It won't be as rough as this. This is the, this is the under, you know, underlayer that the pavement goes on. So this, this won't be the final surface, even the on-paved section.
Oh, goodness, it was nice walking in the firehouse this morning.
Oh, it was nice and cool? So there is a problem. These folks want to purchase this from the current owners. But their well is on railroad right of way property. And this is having to be able to get the railroad to relent and give them an easement or access, permanent access. So the sale is on hold while they try to figure that out. I feel sorry for them because they're in railroad, never, never land.
This isn't going to be on CAT TV, is it?
Yeah, it'll be. Yep.
Some of our comments I'm hoping to...
How you doing? Good. Getting closer to paving.
So what happens now?
Happens. The railroad hasn't told them they can't use it yet. But you know, they don't want to buy something that has access right there. Yep. But ours will be very similar.
I wonder if you can bring that access. You can make your own.
Yes. Well, one of the things that we'll see is, you know, the standard planning term, desire path. So as we see where people are using, if we can find amenable property owners, that will improve them, make them more accessible.
Oh, that makes sense.
Jensen's.
Yes. Quite a difference in the shade than in the sun.
It is surprising how shaded it is. And I really like it.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to make sure that we keep that. You know, probably three, four times a year, we can come in with a mower. The roadside mower, just go right down and mow it. It'll keep it that way so that we keep this kind of open feeling. Otherwise, it'll close in pretty quickly.
You know, that was a question that would come up. Major someone in security and just how, why this is going to be. And right now, it's very open and it feels very...
Yeah, and we would maintain, we would work to maintain this. There's no reason we couldn't. You know, just even just mowing it three, four times a year, you'll keep the trees from going up. We're going to get back just about on time, I think.
Jim's going to have a lot of sweaty people.
At least it's nice and cool in there, so we'll recover fairly quickly.
I'm not, I didn't bring a sweater today.
Although you might get chilled now. Still happy with the ID.4?
Love it.
Yeah, Bill Calvin just bought one. Bill and Jess.
Saw that. I commented.
It's a Volkswagen battery electric vehicle. Basically a crossover SUV kind of thing.
I commented and he said he enjoyed my review.
Oh, okay. Well, so that's what Bill's driving now?
Well, Jess is. Bill gets the Forester. She gets the ID.4 to go back and forth to Williamson. Which makes a lot of sense because they have free charging stations at her office. She's a professor at Williamson, so...
They just started building them in Tennessee now.
Oh, yeah, in Chattanooga, right? Yeah, so they'll lower the price significantly.
I think they lowered it even a little smaller battery pack.
Well, yeah, there's an option for the smaller one. You don't have to take the small one.
Nope, nope, just the option.
Yep, all-electric plug-in.
And how much do they need?
Too, well, depends on whether you have all-wheel drive or rear-wheel drive or just a smaller battery pack. But the typical is about $2.75, $2.80. If you do all-wheel drive, it drops a little bit. Or if you do the smaller battery pack, it'll drop a bit.
Or if it's winter.
Yeah, winter will definitely impact it.
But still, that's a good...
Yeah, it is. I think when you're, when you're above $2.50, it's a pretty reasonable. I guess they have this new app that routes, you can route yourself with a BEV to your destination. And it shows you where to stop to charge and how long you should charge based on your vehicle. So I guess with the particular vehicle it has, you only have to stop once in Maine, Seco, Maine, to recharge for six minutes and you can get to Portland with the one stop.
What's, what's that app?
Again, I think it's...
You have to ask Billy.
So it, yeah, it would be interesting to see what the drop is. I mean, I lose half the capacity.
Yeah. And they may be getting better. I don't know. But that's, that's a real good question. But you should, yeah, check with Billy because he said it was pretty, he was very impressed with it.
Yeah, I've just been using the charge point.
Yeah, yeah. So you know where, where they are. But this one actually calculates the most efficient route.
That's cool.
And how long you have to charge.
And you could do a fast, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, it comes with three years on the Electrify America.
Yeah, the Electrify America, yeah. There's one in Seco, I think.
Oh, cool. That's what makes sense is six minutes then.
You guys got to see the, did you get to see the ladder truck in action?
Yeah, I did, yeah. And I saw it drive down Main Street the other day, I think. And I was surprised because I didn't remember fire trucks having Bennington written on them. Now it makes sense.
Yeah, it looks great. We'll have to do a tour of it for CAT TV.
Yeah, they'll do that for you, I'm sure, just to ask the chief.
I got Jonah on it because he sent over a video of the firehouse being built.
Oh, cool.
25 or 30, whatever the anniversary is this year. I guess I'll wait for your best of your board to close this out.
Stopping the shade up here though, Gene, that makes sense, right?
I can't believe I thought you guys were going to make a stop. I wasn't going to say the word out loud.
Yeah. Thanks for joining us. So hopefully in a few weeks, it'll be paved and you can get across the trestle too. So that's even more fun.
Yeah, I like the idea of the Highline.
Wouldn't that be cool?
It would be good because it doesn't have to be that much stepped up.
No, just like two, three steps. And a little higher rail so no one goes over. I think a definitely a little Highline, yeah. Highline's my favorite must-do when in the city.
I haven't been to yet. I really have to do it. Mark's been telling me that I got to check it out.
Oh, it's really cool. You would love it. It's up right up your alley.
Yeah, I'm sure I would. I've seen photos. They have the Belt Line in Atlanta, which isn't elevated, but it's, it's a perimeter rail corridor. And they've got a good portion of it developed already. And it's very impressive. The amount of businesses that have focused on the rail.
Highline, you can just walk off to a whole bunch of stuff.
It's just really...
Nature and, but yeah, right in the city.
That's enough of that.
Yeah, we need to go Kuaa. We have 5:53. You got seven minutes.
So let's take a five to 10 minute break.
A tournament or a temporary?
Can we just do a...
Yeah, we can do a quick recess. I move that we recess until six.
Second.
There we go.
Good enough.
Okay, we'll recess for seven minutes.
Reconvene?
Think so.
Yes? All right. Good evening, everyone. We're reconvening this meeting after a fantastic walk down the rail trail. And thank you to members of the public that went with us. And thank you to members of the public that went with us. And so you can see it was humid, but it was, it's beautiful. So walk it early in the morning and it's, yeah, more amenable. So I, I am Jeanne Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board. And I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Jean Connor.
Hello, Sarah Parent.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Wonderful. Thank you all. And also with us tonight, we have Bennington Town Manager, Stu Hurd. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes for us. And we have Jim Vires on the camera for cat TV, which we're very, very, very grateful for. So with that, let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance, it is that I, in the United States of America, which is a republic of which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, as many of you know, this Select Board declared August 7th, which was yesterday, as Purple Heart Recognition Day. So in honor of that, Jean has, has some words to say. And then we'll move into the Town Vision after that.
Let me just make it clear, mostly these words I'm gonna say are not mine. They belong to Lieutenant Colonel Mark Leslie. I don't know who he is, but he's clearly someone with a lot of wisdom. So this year, I wanted to just give everyone a little bit more historical context of what the Purple Heart Award is. So this is what Mark Leslie said during a presentation of a Purple Heart recipient in 2020. I feel like what he said beautifully expresses what the Purple Heart Award is and what it isn't. Lieutenant Mark Leslie said, "The Purple Heart is the oldest American military medal, and it is a different medal than most. It's a medal no one wants to earn. The Purple Heart is not awarded for bravery or heroism. It is awarded for sacrifice. It is recognized by most military veterans as the national symbol of sacrifice. Sadly, many Americans do not know the significance or meaning of the medal. The Purple Heart Medal is awarded to those who have been wounded or killed in combat. Purple Heart Day is an observance that commemorates the creation of the Purple Heart Medal in 1782 by General George Washington. Originally known as the Badge of Military Merit, it was initially awarded to three Revolutionary War soldiers in 1783. The Revolutionary War ended and the Purple Heart faded into obscurity until it was revived in 1932 on the bicentennial anniversary of Washington's birth. Purple Heart Medals are retroactively awarded to those wounded or killed while serving in the armed forces during World War I due to enemy action on or after April 5th, 1917. It is estimated that about 1.9 million Purple Hearts have been awarded since that time. It is also the most intricate and expensive medal in the inventory. The day is marked to recognize that those, recognize those that have made a sacrifice that all soldiers must be prepared to make but never want to." Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We didn't know, so I wouldn't be surprised if you did. All right, so then on to our Town Vision, please.
Okay. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of July 25th and the warrants. For the purpose of discussion, could I have motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the warrants for minutes?
No.
All right, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, great. Thank you. Next up is Public Comment. And we have three people signed up. I'll remind you, Public Comment is for items that are not on the agenda. And there is a full list of sort of what, what Public Comment is designed for at the podium and also on our website. Please try and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. So first up, Sam Rustino to talk about Trail Fest. No, Trail Fest, VFW, Pleasant Street. We've got three minutes.
I know, I got a lot to cover. I was the senior student of Bennington, Vermont. And I might add that Purple Heart Sunday, I want to recognize Eric Halverson. As you know, he was in Desert Storm, Iraq. He passed away with a helicopter pilot amongst others in 2003. And I might add, there's a lot of caregivers that are out there that should get a Purple Heart and also the ones that were involved in COVID. Now, my subject back in Trail Fest, it was a great event for the first time. It was nice to see Select Board members attend. But in my humblest opinion, I was hoping that maybe some of the Select Board members would get on microphone and welcome the ones that were coming off the trail into our community. They did camp that night. They did go downtown and get, explore our town, go into our eateries. I'm looking for our town to be a little more transparent in an event like that. I know most of you can't make those meetings, but that would have been nice. Back in July as well, the 15th, the VFW along with the Eagles Club put on a wonderful event. I don't know if any of you were a part of that or not. I was a two-year-old that had, I believe, a cancer of the bladder. $55,000 were raised in such a short time. With the help of cat TV and other organizations that came quickly together. I have never felt an event like that in so much community in a long, long time. I think with the VFW and the leadership of Norm LeBlanc, we should follow in his footsteps. Secondly, there was an awful event that happened in Pleasant Street. I was hoping that our local government would have some type of a statement. I know it wasn't proper to speak simply because of, couldn't do more than Public Comment. Chief Doucette did make a vague comment that there was somebody that was possibly armed and dangerous still out there. But I'm looking, you need to hear it from the general public. You can't read it in the paper. It's gotta come from the board. I'm glad to see that our ladder truck came in within 30 days, as Stu Hurd mentioned at the last meeting. And it is a beauty. And hopefully it'll be in the Battle Day parade. I know it will be. Let's see what else. I know it's hot weather out. My thought is the homeless. I don't want to come here in January and saying, okay, it's 20 below zero. What are we gonna do to house the homeless in a warming shelter? The time now is to start thinking about a homeless shelter, get things in place. And I guess that's all my three minutes.
Thank you, Sam.
Jeanne, can I say one thing quickly in response or not?
Absolutely.
Just so you know, on Friday night and in a number of occasions on Saturday morning, I did make those personal contacts with hikers who were downtown because I was downtown, footloose and fancy-free. So I was able to greet any number of those hikers coming into town. And they were very thankful for Bennington's welcome.
Great. Thank you. Nancy White, Ben High.
Nancy White, Bennington. I'd like to know how town officials are verifying that people taking part in town-wide surveys online live in the town of Bennington? Because if they don't, they aren't helping to pay the budget for things that are getting pushed forward. My other questions are on the Ben High. It's time for the Select Board to hold an open house where the public can go through every floor and every room. Bennington residents need to understand, we may be on the hook having to pay to subsidize that building for the next 30 years. I want to know if there's secret plans for a parking garage at the Ben High. Everybody who knows what you want to use the building for knows there doesn't begin to be enough parking, and you have to answer that question. 16 months ago, when you started talking about moving our senior center into a privately owned building, I asked if the state of Vermont had been inspecting the work that had been done prior to that date. You didn't know. So I'd like to know if the state has inspected the work that has been done over the past three or four years and if all of that work has been done up to code. A few years ago, you learned that it would cost $700,000 to $800,000 to get the asbestos out of the building. I started asking you about that over a year ago. I'd like to know if all of that asbestos is still in the building. So those are my starting questions for the Ben High, and most of these I've been asking for well over a year.
Thank you, Nancy. So as we discussed at the last meeting, when Dan reported out, we're going to have a meeting September. That will be a meeting dedicated to Ben High. And that will, actually, I don't know if it can, we'll figure out how to make sure that that walkthroughs are possible. I don't know, yeah, I'm speaking out of turn here because I don't know what the state of the building. I don't know whether that's possible. But we will try and make a walkthrough. There have been several. If you recall, last year, there was a day when all the recreation programs were opened up, both at the rec center at Ben High, at Bennington Sports Center. And lots and lots and lots of people walked through all those buildings. There were guides at each of those buildings and people were able to get their answer, their questions answered that they had up to that point. So, and in terms of the others, I think Dan answered your asbestos question last time. But when we get to, when we have the Ben High meeting, then you will be able to ask all of your questions. Hopefully, the presentation will give you a lot of those answers, okay? You do keep asking the same questions and we do keep encouraging you to talk with staff. So that, that would be helpful. In terms of town surveys, I, I think that's always a risk, but it is that someone from out of town fills out a survey. But it's, hmm, it's like, it's a lot of trouble to go around looking for surveys in other towns to fill out. So, you know, the likelihood of having an overwhelming majority of out-of-towners fill out a Bennington Town Survey, I think is, is slim. But that is not the only consideration in terms of how we make our decisions. It's just one factor. So, okay, so thank you. And then Sarah. You're moving. So Sarah is speaking on Battle Day.
Hi, yes, Sarah Parent, Bennington, Vermont. I'm just here to comment on the Battle Day Bennington Food Truck Fest, which is a Saturday, August 13th, from 11:00 to 7:00 on the corner of Main and School Street. It goes for the entertainment for the crossover bloggers. We'll have two performances, one at 11:30 and one at 1:00 PM. The throwbacks will be performing at 2:30 to 4:30. And Flashpoint is on stage from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll have over a dozen of food trucks. And thank you to our sponsors, Bank of Bennington, Coggins Auto Group, Bill Devino Esquire, Hannaford Supermarkets, Bennington Banner, and All American Waste. See you there.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, so next up is an exciting agenda item, which is really, I think Shannon will explain what we're doing here. But the title of it is Youth Development and Prevention Partners.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Barsati, Community Development Director. And tonight, we want to welcome our community partners, Dare Chamings from the Alliance for Community Transformations, and Kayla Becker and Taylor McGuire. From, so it's Bennington Branch Director and Program Director? Assistant Director for the Berkshire Family YMCA here, programming here in Bennington. And what we're here to talk about tonight is positive youth development and youth prevention programs in the community. And I can speak from experience, you know, in here in my role for the town, working with both of these organizations. I'm the, the local government representative for the Advisory Council of ACT. And then I'm also really have been very involved with Kayla and Taylor and their programming here in Bennington. And I can also speak as a parent of teenagers who have been involved in both programs, the Leadership Group at the Middle School with ACT. And then my kids both are users of the rec center, the community center as well. So I'm happy to welcome them. And just to say a little bit more about positive youth development. So if you, if you look up what is positive youth development, and there is a federal website called youth.gov that really gets into, you know, kind of the work that's been done in youth development throughout the years. That positive youth development is an intentional pro-social approach that engages youth within their communities, schools, organizations, peer groups, and families in a manner that is productive and constructive. It recognizes, utilizes, and enhances young people's strengths and promotes positive outcomes for young people by providing opportunities, fostering positive relationships, and furnishing the support needed to build on their leadership strengths. And I think what I see in the work of these organizations is that's really in action. They're involving youth in the planning of the programming. And I think that that, you know, it really speaks to the connection that they have with youth in the community. So at that, I'll take, let Dare take over.
Okay, now if I can successfully navigate the computer, we'll be good. So thank you for having me. It's so nice to be here with our partners. Dare Chamings, the Director of ACT in Bennington. We are a substance misuse prevention coalition, supporting Bennington area youth in making healthy decisions. And we have representation across 12 community sectors. We have, I think, 25 members to date, which is great. All right. I did it. So a little about what we do. We offer substance use education and outreach, suicide prevention and mental health, youth empowerment and engagement opportunities, and we offer community support as needed. So I always like to, any opportunity really, to share this quote by Dr. Gordon Flatt. He's a psychologist out of Canada. "We at ACT center our work around the idea of mattering and youth mattering." And he says that "mattering is the sense of being significant and valued by other people. People who believe they matter to others have a key protective resource that can buffer them from life stressors and challenges throughout their lives." And we know that mattering matters. So approaches that promote help-seeking behavior, connections to caring adults and supportive peers, community engagement, all of these have shown to improve feelings of connectedness, better mental health outcomes, reduced prevalence of risky behavior and suicide. And here's some recent data over the last couple of years that about half of middle and high schoolers in the region feel they matter to their community. Only 35% of those that identify as LGBTQ feel that they matter to the community. So some risk factors associated with youth substance use and misuse is perceived peer and parent acceptability of substances, community norms that are favorable towards substance use, availability of those substances, the access to which they get them, family trauma and stress, poverty, low commitment to school, and lack of community connectedness. So when we talk about protective factors, right, it looks like after-school and third-space programs, mentoring programs, mental health treatment and recovery services, affordable housing, health and social equity, cultural awareness, youth-friendly downtowns and outdoor spaces, and town health and wellness policies. This is an example of some signage. We worked with the town a few years ago to put some substance and smoke-free signage on town sidewalks that border school properties. So that was, and that was youth-led, that project. So that was really special. So I know I only have a couple of minutes, but I did want to share with you some preliminary data from our Core Measure Survey that we administered this spring to the middle and high school. The high school data is still being analyzed and we'll have the final reports to you in a couple of weeks. But I wanted to share some highlights from the middle school data. 420 students participated in the survey. The survey measures youth's past 30-day use of substances, the perceptions of risk and harm. And then we added some questions in the. harm, and then we added some questions in the last couple of years around mental health, resiliency, and home life. So for our middle schoolers, this is the reported use in the past 30 days. We were not surprised to see an increase in vaping or cannabis use. Vaping is up 6% over the 2021 survey, and cannabis is up 3% in this population. Alcohol typically is the most commonly used substance by young people, and that's a national statistic, but cannabis is hot on its heels. This one's interesting because it's the perception of risk of physical or other harm from using particular substances. If you look at the line for cannabis, we have 18% of respondents citing that they don't feel there's any risk of harm to them if they use or misuse this substance. So that's about 75 students that answered that way. So some mental health highlights, we have 46% of kids that are feeling sad or hopeless at least some of the time. A pretty good amount are feeling anxious or worried, and 40% at some point thought about hurting themselves. We do want to note that there are significant differences in mental health responses by sexual orientation and gender. The full survey results will break that information down for you, but students identifying as heterosexual are less likely to report poor mental health, males are least likely to report poor mental health, and students reporting other genders are most likely to report mental health. And one example of that is 58% of transgender students that participated in the survey report feeling sad or hopeless all of the time. And that's really significant for us. And then we have our resiliency piece. So almost 60% of kids feel they have healthy ways to manage stress and worry, which is great. A majority have adults that they can go home to for help. And then a big one down here is having hobbies or activities that they enjoy, taking lessons in music, art, or dance, and being a member of a club, group, or sports team, or rec center, or library program. So this year's, we added a category about home life because we wanted to get a sense of if kids were lacking in kind of those basic essentials, right? So 72.7% of kids feel safe at home all the time. That means we have quite a few that are not feeling so safe. Most kids have enough food to eat at home, which is great, but this means that around 50 students are regularly food insecure. So this is a big one for us this year. These are, these personal care essential items that tend to be expensive, are not covered by SNAP benefits, and our kids are needing these items. So 31% of the kids that responded to this survey report not always having access to these types of items, so soap and shampoo, and menstrual care, and oral care, clean clothes. So this is about 130 students. Do you have any questions about that little bit of survey? That was kind of a lot, I threw it all at you. No?
Can I ask about the, the question, I think I matter? How did that compare to the Risk Behavior Survey?
They're, they're about the same.
Okay, so that really hasn't shifted?
Not too much. I will note that in 2015, that Youth Risk Behavior Survey, Bennington students reported, reported feeling connected to their community, about 40% of them. So it has gone up, which is great, but we still have some work to do.
And Sam, Sam has a question.
Sam Resino, Bennington, Vermont. Obviously, you've been going to the school and doing all these. Some people can't, the, the parents can't get into the school. Have you ever thought of going into a section of a neighborhood and going to them like a block party, and do like what we did, I don't know, maybe what, six, seven years ago, Catalyst? Remember the Catalyst in back of the bank parking lot? That was the last time we did one, and we didn't do anything else. And we got a blood pressure checked, checked their health, wellness of things, they had the fire truck there cooking out. You folks were there, some of you were, some of you weren't. But it was supposed to continue before Michael left. Michael left, now we didn't carry the ball to go into the other neighborhoods, and I would welcome that. We really need to go to the neighborhoods, and without insulting the neighborhood, we've got to go to them.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Bruce, you have a question?
Yeah, I want to go back to the just previous slide. I'm assuming that you've shared this with the school system.
Yeah, there, yep.
And so, and, and I would, I would bet, having taught at the high school for 20-plus years, that the numbers wouldn't be that far different there as well. I mean, it would surprise me if they were dramatically different.
Right.
So my question really is, do you know of steps that are being taken either in the community or at the school system to begin to address what is really an essential issue of readiness for participation in a school system?
Right, because not having these things presents a barrier, right?
Yes.
Yep, and we are working on that, and you're going to see that in a couple of slides, Bruce.
Oh, well, there you go.
Are there any other questions about the data?
Are the numbers and percentages you're showing only kids who live in the town of Bennington, or do they include kids from other towns?
It's the district, SBSU.
Okay, so. Dare, you'll have to come up, so Nancy, if you could step back and Dare can come up so that Captain B can, can get the answer.
It's the SBSU district.
That's a concern to me because none of the other towns can actually see the percentages. I'm very concerned as I watch Bennington being blurred in with all the other towns in the county. We're the largest town, and I think it's time the other towns started to see an actual breakdown of what their kids and their own citizens are dealing with.
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone else? Jean?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about what each of us who are in this room and not in this room but are at home can do, something really tangible, like donating toothpaste and shampoo is clearly maybe one of them, but I'm, I'm feeling like, as a, as a member of this community, we should all be attending events and encouraging and volunteering, and if we have the money, donating. So give us some really tangible things that we can do.
Well, for starters, come to an ACT meeting, right? It's, these meetings are, we meet quarterly, and then we have some smaller groups that, that meet on like project-specific things throughout the year. And we love new blood. Your voices matter. We want to hear from all different people, all walks of life. This is going to help inform our work. Please take our community survey, that's going to be the last slide. That helps guide us too, to get your perceptions, adults' perceptions around what youth are doing and what they might need. And there's a lot of opportunities for engagement throughout our town. And I'd be happy to like offline to talk to you more about that, but really, I encourage everybody, if you have the chance, come to a meeting, we want to hear from you.
So let's, I, you, you're not, you still have more of your presentation.
Yeah, I want to.
So let's go ahead and have you do that, because I think some of the, no, well, you, you took a pause to get questions, but.
Yeah, no, and I want to be mindful of Kayla's time.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were done. I would have saved my question.
So I'll go real quick. So a couple of the things that we work on, last year, we launched the Space Place After School program at the middle school, which, and this was created by our youth leadership group a number of years ago. Oh, gosh, you know what, it was pre-pandemic, and then we were all set to go, and the pandemic hit, and they didn't get to enjoy it. So we kept the name and the design in honor of them and their hard work. That's been really successful, and we love that partnership with the middle school. We also co-facilitate with them our youth leadership group. So this is a youth coalition that focuses on peer-to-peer substance use prevention and mental health initiatives, and they have presented to you before. So here's an example of one of their projects, it's the Sunshine Box Project. They created this during the pandemic, just in response to the feelings of loneliness that kids were having, and it was so popular that we kept it going when school was back in session. And they are free monthly take-home activity boxes, they include resources for health and wellness, and things like creative writing, and self-care, and STEAM activities. This was made possible by a small grant a couple of years ago, and it is now a community-sponsored program. So there's an example of something that you can do, Jean, right? So we've have some individual sponsors and some local organizations and businesses that sponsor and sustain this program. It's wonderful. And there's a couple of our kiddos last year. And then the Bennington Youth Thrive is a platform of programs and events calendar, and it's a local organization directory. It's very user-friendly. Any youth-serving organizations can go onto our website and submit their programs and events into that calendar, and it's updated monthly. So this gives youth and families an, an opportunity to see really what's going on in the area. Most of the programs are free. And then we get Bruce to the Take Care Project, and we are paying really close attention to that data that we're getting, and we're hearing about kids in our community that, you know, are lacking these essential items. And we started this out of conversations with our partners at CRJ, and we were talking about period and hygiene poverty, and how it affects the youth in our community. And it builds off the work of organizations like Planned Parenthood of New England and others who've been working to increase access to menstrual products in the region. We have created an access map, so if you go on our website, there is a Take Care Google map, and you can see where throughout the community of Bennington, North Bennington, where you can access free products. And then we also have a donation box. Our office is at the Downtown Visitor Center, and Jenny was so kind to let us put a donation box right in the lobby, so if anybody feels so moved, you can donate something. So Bruce, I hope this helps to answer your question a little bit. We are working closely with the family engagement specialists at the, at the SBSU. And again, I want to be mindful of time, we can talk more about this, but we're pretty excited about how to expand this, to make sure our kids are getting what they need so that they can thrive and be healthy students and community members.
Great.
And last, I promise, this is our 2022 community survey, it's launching this week. You can participate by going onto our website, it will be on our Facebook or Instagram page, and this is really helpful for us to get adult community members' perceptions around youth substances in, in the Bennington region. And that's basically it. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Great, so I'm sure there are a couple more questions. I, I have two, just, so how are you using the survey results? And second, which is related question, how do you know when your projects, when your activities are successful, when they actually are moving the needle?
Yeah, that's a great question. We look really closely at the data, right? The Youth Risk Behavior Survey data and our own Core Measures data. And, you know, we survey kids, you know, we're very fortunate to be in a position where we see kids every week, right, during the school year, and are they participating in our programs? Is that increasing? Is it decreasing? What, they're going to tell us what's working and what's not. So that's another helpful way for us to measure whether we're being successful, and how we need to adapt something or change something so that it makes better sense for them.
Question, Gary?
Dare, first, thanks very much for coming in and presenting this to us, it's incredible. The question I had is, how many youth do you, on an average, have involved in your program?
So our youth leadership group typically has between 10 and 12 kids per year, and they're seventh and eighth graders. And after-school drop-ins, I mean, it runs the gamut, right? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Stu?
As, as an adult without children, I have to say, I don't know much about what you do, and I think that is a problem for the community, because I've heard from other adults who don't think there's anything going on dealing with youth prevention. So I think we collectively need to explore how to get your word out there a little bit better, and maybe it's a link to our website as well, I mean, we can do that. I just, there's a lot of good stuff there, there's a lot of stuff that's very painful to see that people don't have just the bare essentials of life, but we need to get the word out, we need to understand that there is an organization that we can reach out to as adults without children and offer some assistance on a regular basis.
Thank you, Stu, that's really helpful and lovely to hear. Please take our survey. We often hear from adults who have grown children that are out of the house or without children, how does this affect me? How does youth substance use prevention affect my life? But it affects everyone, right? And getting that message to that population has been a challenge, so I really appreciate you bringing that up.
Maybe we could have Jonah push out this information on our.
We certainly will.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Questions from the audience, wait, hang on. Sam, Sam, is it a question that you have? Right now, let's.
Question statement.
Taurus had her hand up too.
Okay, so try and keep it really quick. Okay, so come on up.
It kind of shares into it with adults going into it, what has happened the last few weeks, Bennington has a crime grade of a C+. You mentioned mental health, with an untimely at 123 River Street, and with social media, you reach out to those people.
Okay.
You ask, what can you do? You go onto social media and you reach out to the people and let them talk. I reached out on one person, they made a statement that they feel ashamed, the addicts out there, they don't want to speak because they're being judged and being judgmental. We need to open up and, and not label them so they can heal on their own. They want to be, go to a caring community, and this is what I was getting from them.
Thanks, Sam. All right, so, yes, Taurus, please.
Hi, Taurus Isalhart, Bennington. I, apparently you're still taking, collecting survey material, but I thought I heard 400 and something as a number that, that you had for surveys to begin with. I guess what I'm asking is, what, what percentage of the, the youth in a certain range are you actually tapping into? You know, how representative are these people, and how, how can their voices be heard to be part of the shaping of it?
Great, and Dare, you can explain, there, it sounds like there are two different surveys we're talking about here.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry for that confusion. So the data I shared is from our Core Measure Survey, and that's that 420, that was 420 middle schoolers, sixth through eighth graders that took that survey, and then I think we have close to 500 high schoolers that participated in the survey. The community survey is different, that is for adults in the community, okay?
And your depth, your, 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 how large a number, you know, students who they are there, middle school.
Right, so there are 600 students enrolled at the middle school, so 420 is a really good participant number, honestly. A lot of the kids can't participate in surveys for a variety of reasons, so we were really pleased with that number this year. Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions? Derek, that was really informative. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I'm happy to talk to you offline. Please reach out to us. We are always available. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll set you guys up.
All right. For those who don't know, I'm Kayla.
And I'm Taylor.
And Derek shared amazing data points, and you're going to see our data is a lot of photos, because the Y in the community is a partner in prevention for youth primarily through providing upstream positive experience opportunities. And we are about to end one of our biggest, which is summer camp. So this is a lot about that, and we'll touch on after-school programming. But if you have questions along the way, because it is a lot of photos, just feel free to jump in. All right. At a glance, so we have an extremely long summer here, thanks SBSU. So we had eight theme weeks, but we started early and we're ending late, just to accommodate, you know, end of school to start. We had over 1,000 camp week instances. So what that means is, we may have had 150 students one week, but all together duplicated, we had over 1,000 weeks of camp experience this summer. I'm going to talk about SBSU.
Yep. So this summer, actually, last summer was our first summer with SBSU partnering with their Summer Recovery Program. So students start their day with SBSU during educational components that they need, and then they are brought to us for like a camp, social, emotional experience for the remainder of the day. And that was for the month of July.
We'll talk about community partners. That's a huge part of our summer experience. The Leader in Training and the Counselor in Training programs have really developed a lot this year. And because we got so big, we had to branch out and go into multiple community sites, which is great. All right. So we had 952, that's a rough estimate, community spots. I mean, these are families who came directly to us, signed up for camp. 392 SBSU slots. So those are students who were selected by the school to take part in recovery and then come to us. They actually contracted for much more than that, but because students had to attend the learning part, you know, we don't always get full attendance. But it did equal 120 to 180 campers every week.
And then ages for our camp programs start at kindergarten. And with our LIT and CIT programs, we go all the way up to grade 10 before we go into hiring processes with most of them. So we are really...
But that's really the goal, right? Seeing them from kindergarten and then end up hiring them, you know, a couple of years.
And during registration, we asked them all for what schools that they attend, so that it can kind of go into presentations like this. So you can see all of the SBSU schools are represented, including all the private schools in our area, and then the middle and high schools as well.
Yeah. I think we even had a few Arlington and outliers, but for this presentation, we'll focus on this area. These are so fun.
The theme weeks, though, these are our theme weeks. Each week, we do field trips, have community partners come in. We have art-based activities, and even like gross motor activities surrounding these themes to kind of give more of an enriching experience for all the kids. You can see that we have pictures of drawing outside, a visit to Merck Forest that we did, and then a picture of the fire department up there for Community Heroes Week as well.
And we're going to talk about it in a minute, but one of the things we did to kick off summer was a trip to Merck Forest. It's not that far away, and almost no one had gone, including my staff. And I grew up going there, so I was so excited. But our staff all went. And so many of these teenage staff had never been. They got their cellphones, you know, set aside. They didn't miss them the whole time. And I think when you're talking about youth development and prevention, experiences like this were really powerful to see.
So just some additional photos. We had so many photos, it was hard to choose from. It was so fun to kind of recap today when we were looking. But you can kind of see some of the things we did, different resources we utilized, library, the kids doing a talent show in the Ben High Auditorium down there in the left-hand corner, and the high school track as well for a little mini track meet.
All right. So this one, we had a little technical glitch with our community partners. So I did write them down. I just want to run through them. Town of Bennington, our guys up there in the upper left, take on a lot, taking care of this many kids on the grounds. We are outside-based. That means we are inside if it's thunder and lightning. Otherwise, we are making a mess in every area that we can, and they're doing a great job supporting us. Abbey Food Group, they were incredible partners, gave breakfast, lunch, snacks to all of the kids. We gave out over 1,000 community meals for five weeks. SBSU, of course, Do4, providing busing. DCF and Easter Seals, providing funding for campers who wouldn't have access. The ACES Tennis Bumble, they came and the kids loved the tennis time. I just have to share that. I was kind of skeptical, but they were loving it. The library hosted us. The Bennington Sports Foundation provided funding for a couple of youth to continue camp. ACT supported our Come Alive Outside, community passports that we've talked about. Weber Vocational, we hosted a couple of high school youth who worked with us providing support during the day. So that's just a glimpse of them, but there are so many.
So kind of training and development are the base of like everything we do. So some things that were additional pieces this summer, so parent support from SBSU during the month of July. So there were quite a few learners who, because of our behavior guidelines, wouldn't be able to come unless they had the extra support and helping hand. So SBSU provided that for multiple students, so they could all come to the camp day after the morning time at the schools. And then, of course, our 48 summer staff we bring on to help with all those kiddos. And out of those 48, 33 are teens, which is awesome. And...
Woo-hoo!
Yes.
Good development.
Yeah. And then we also hire site leads. So those are the other numbers that aren't the 33, who are a little older, a little bit more experienced. Some of them only 20, you know, just out of the teen years, who help mold our teens and new staff, grow into them in a few years. We also had a few high school teachers who came out and applied for a summer camp position, and they were so beneficial in teaching a lot of skills and from their experiences. So it was really great to see that. And then we also started our summer camp training with a trauma-informed training with all of our staff, talking about food insecurities, traumas that they might see kids meet at home. And we used the American Camp Association's kind of info to kind of guide that training. We were trained in trauma so that we could administer to all of our youth staff. And actually, in the bottom corner, our staff is reading a book on trauma from a local author.
Yes, Valerie Coulter's book was really powerful for the staff to read in that group setting. It was really cool.
So our Leader in Training program started developing last year. I'd come across it otherwise, and it was for that middle school age group, that ages out of our typical camp program, and then kind of missed years before they're old enough to be hired. So how do we bridge that gap? So this is the program. We started last year. We learned a ton, and it molded it into what it is this year. So the Leader in Training, we had quite a few of those, like sixth, seventh-grade students who were in the program. They did different things, leadership opportunities. Jordan, one of our staff right there, she is one of the high school teachers, took on the program as the lead and did a lot of different, did surveys with them to kind of capture how they were feeling during the program, did special activities, and learned a lot of skills for job readiness.
Yeah, I feel like they had a lot of purpose. They always want a job. Like, they're in that age where they're, they want to be at camp and they want to have fun, but they're... I asked my son, who is a leader in training. He was like, what did you do today? I helped little kids. Oh, okay. And that was fun? Yeah, I got to show them how to, you know, play cornhole or whatever it was. So it was really...
And that's so, peer learning's so beneficial.
Yep.
So it was really great to see. And then this is the end-of-year survey that they just took, and we had to share some of them, things they struggled with, things they felt they've succeeded at. It's like, they struggled with the most remembering names of the little kids.
There's a lot of them, okay.
And the favorite part of summer was having fun, playing with little kids, swimming. It was great to see their kind of feedback and what they've learned compared to what they've started with at the beginning with their surveys to the end of summer, and they were all excited to come back and grow into the CIT role, which we'll get into.
Yep. All right, CIT. So we wish we could hire you, but not quite, is this age group? So they have to apply. They have to interview. We work out a schedule. And again, they are such an important part of our camp experience. And the, I tell them when I meet with them, the younger kids are looking up to you. And they take that very seriously. Yeah, I just can't say enough good about the CITs, and I can't wait until we can hire them.
Yeah. And they really take it so seriously. Like you said, it's, part of it is that professionalism, job readiness skills that we build with them from the start of the process to the end. So it's, I think, it's turning into a really successful program that we're proud of.
Is there a process?
Yeah, a lot of similarities.
Just some pictures, just again...
Because we couldn't stop.
Because we couldn't stop grabbing pictures, but these are some more.
Yep. All right. So this is just the support. There's an old slide about the YMCA, but I want to go on to the next. That's the end? Okay. All right. So then, really to wrap it up, the Y serves all these students. We have a great partnership with SBSU, and we are excited to continue it in our after-school program that's continuing with a renewed contract with them. So we will be providing after-school at three sites, serving all of the SVSU, not Arlington. But we will be Pownell, Shasberry, Benel, Molly Stark Monument, and Woodford will come together downtown. And then we will also be at the Village School in North Bennington separately. We do that in a lottery system because it is no cost to families. So to be fair, we take interested names, and then we draw names for the spots. And they can, families interested can sign up now to enter. I don't have the website written down, but it's bfymca.org forward slash BRC, like Bennington Rec Center, ASP, After-School Program. Or you can just email one of us, and we can help you. But, yeah. Any questions?
Oh, I'm sure we have questions. That was great. And Lynn, let's start us off.
Simple factual sort of, can you give me some sense? I really love the LIT/CIT idea. I think it's critical age. Roughly, what are the numbers that we're talking about?
Yeah, I realized as I was driving that I missed that. So LITs, we had between eight and 16, and just only varied based on summer vacations, really.
Yep.
And CITs, we had seven.
Great.
Yeah.
Good. That's helpful.
Great. It's a good thing you two were young, because you must be exhausted. Obviously, this summer program has grown by leaps and bounds. And you may not be able to answer this, but what do you attribute the growth to? Can you think of a couple things that you definitely can point to?
I think a big part of it is just the community need. And Kayla came in as someone super into the motherhood collaboration and herself having kids. So her passion was in that. And I also have a passion with working with youth. And I think just that combined with the need in our community for it was what drove us to work to get to that point.
Yeah, that's great. And thank God we fenced in that space.
Oh, my goodness. That fenced yard changed how we were able to do camp. I should note, for those who aren't aware, we had our younger campers, so grades kindergarten, first grade to third grade, based at the Bennington Sports Center. We had the older kids based at the rec center. And then during recovery, we also had Shasberry Elementary School that did Shasberry and Arlington students.
Wow. The one, I don't remember which slide it was, but there was the term recovery. What does that mean?
It's their summer program for their learners who needed the extra care and help after the school year ended. So that's like the phrase for the summer.
I think it came from COVID.
It used to be called summer school.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's COVID recovery.
Summer recovery.
Oh, it's COVID recovery.
I think it was COVID recovery, and then, you know, they just realized it's not a one-year fix. So we are going to...
Now I understand.
Yeah.
I was thinking, what are they recovering from?
What are we recovering from? No, it's just that.
Yeah. And I had just one more question about the after-school program. You said it's so popular that you have a lottery system. If you're one of the winners, is it for the entire school year?
So we break it into segments, and you do have first refusal, but, you know, you may be doing a sport one session and then not need it the next. So it worked out really well. We did it from January to June this last school year as a trial. It worked out really well. We were able to accommodate more. You know, as you work it out, some family may only need two days. So we do work with families to get as many as we can.
Awesome.
And those who have families who have multiple children, it's not, one child gets it and the other three don't. If one child's drawn, the family gets the slot. Otherwise, typically, it's useless to the family if only one of them gets it, right?
Right. Right. Yeah. That's great. That's all. Thank you. I had a question. I just, I'm really so, I don't know, pleased that you do trauma training at the beginning. That just feels like that helps connect the counselors and LITs with the community in a way that they otherwise might not connect.
Yeah. I don't have the information here, but Taylor did a really nice job. So we took the training ourselves to be trainers, and then we pulled local data. So when we shared it to the counselors, we could say, this many of the campers may be coming with food insecurity. And what does that mean? And maybe you shouldn't eat your Domino's in front of them, right? So it was a great training to start with.
That's great. That's really commendable. Yeah. Questions from the audience? Yes, Dan.
My big question is, how do we move from a lottery system to where everybody that needs it gets the services they need? And I assume that's an SBSU cost issue, but it'd be great to understand how we could help to get to that point.
That's a great question. Do you have a sense of the answer?
Yeah. So I think that part of it will be interesting to see how many we get entered this year. We did start in January last year. So I believe a lot of families already had their after-school figured out, just out of desperation. So first, let me figure out the need. And then, as everyone, staff, we were very fortunate to have 48 summer staff. That was an incredible number to onboard and get. A lot went back to school. So anyone looking for an after-school job, super flexible schedule, great work environment, all the things. But I think that will be our biggest thing.
And we did double slot numbers for this school year.
Yes, that's important to know.
So that's also...
Yes, we doubled. And with the support of SBSU, they felt really strongly to provide, you know, the best opportunity for families that they could that we could also deliver. But staffing, I think, will be hard.
Well, a 21st Century Grant.
Oh, in that.
Yeah, that we could apply for again. Might be another way to pay for that. Sam, please.
Sam R. Stier, again, from Bennington.
Come on all the way up before you speak.
I feel like I'm in school. Sam R. Stier from Bennington, Vermont. On your Facebook page, it was very enticing. In fact, I was the one that made the comment. Can adults attend too? Because there's things I grew up with, Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, symmetry to this. And we as adults, we don't have fun like this anymore. So I mean, to kind of tag along and, you know, split your time to partake and also assist. You almost want to play hooky for the week, so.
Well, and now that camp is ending, I am shifting my brain to more adult wellness so that we can start adding in more fun things for adults to do and those things. So now that that's kind of wrapping up, I can shift my thoughts.
Because the YMCA is cradle to cane.
We sure are. Yes.
Other questions? This has been a really helpful overview. We know we have a lot of work to do, but we have two programs in this community, among others, that are really doing great work. Thank you all. That was inspiring. You guys were all inspiring. Wonderful. All right. Now we're going to shift gears to the Morgan Spring Public Access Update. Who's taking that on?
Bruce.
You're taking it? Okay. Jim, you're up.
Bruce, Tom, and I were part of a subcommittee, if you will, to examine the feasibility and whether or not a spigot could be done in their town. We had several questions. Cost, number one. We had several questions, cost, number one, and it was estimated if we were to do it, it would cost between $50,000 and $125,000 to have it installed. There were additional concerns like a shut-off, that would be tamper-proof, would it be maintained around the year? And then the central question that we had was liability. If this water at the spigot were untreated, would that expose the town to liability if someone should end up being poisoned? And the short answer to that is yes. However, what was most important and what we learned, and this came from, and this is in the packet for anybody who wants to look at it online, this came from the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection Division. And the relevant and the most important part of this letter, I'm not going to read the entire thing to you, is Section 4 requires that the permitty, that is the town, operate its chlorine disinfection system on a continuous basis. The permitty must maintain measurable free chlorine residual concentrations throughout and to the ends of the distribution system. Now, that would include any spigot. Furthermore, they go on to say, continuous disinfection is required. Until otherwise directed by the secretary, the permitty shall operate its chlorine disinfection system on a continuous basis. The permitty must maintain measurable free chlorine residual concentrations throughout and to the ends of the distribution system. Now, what that means effectively, and I hope Stu, if I'm not able to be clear enough, that Stu can clear up wherever I've been vague, or maybe Dan. What this amounts to is that if we were to spend up to $125,000 to put in a spigot, it's essentially the same water. It's the same water that's coming out of your tap. Because we, as a town, by state, the state are required to not allow untreated water to be distributed in our community. So as much as I certainly had hoped that we could have some of this Morgan Spring water, the state doesn't allow it in our municipality. Did I miss anything, Stu?
No, you spoke very well.
Okay, I had my moment. So that's it. Our conclusion as a subcommittee is that it would not make fiscal sense to put in, spend up to $125,000 on a spigot that essentially is giving you the water that's coming out of your own tap, as Jean pointed out in our last meeting. And I think that's a great idea. If you're afraid of what's in the water, have one of the Brita filters that's attached right to the faucet that can filter out any impurities, so that essentially you will actually be getting closer to spring water right out of your tap. So unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, we have to act responsibly when it comes to spending this kind of money, and it just wouldn't make sense to do that. That's it.
Can I just clarify one thing? You don't have to put the filter on your faucet. You can buy a pitcher, probably at Walmart, and run your tap water through that, and then put that in the refrigerator. You don't have to do the faucet.
I just wanted to add two thoughts. While it was important to ask the questions, it was also important for us to do our due diligence and to remind everybody that we don't live in a vacuum, and that our water system, as good as it is, and as pure as it is, lives within the regulatory system of the United States and of the state of Vermont. And while I would have loved to have had the opportunity for people to have bypassed the amount of plastic that is going into our environment by buying bottled water, I will also encourage folks to use a filter system at home. Buying bottled water, I know it's what people think is going to be the purest way to do it, but there is a very simple process, which we have used in my house for the last 25 years, and it works very, very well. So I encourage us all to do that. And I hope that folks who are still insistent on the idea will in fact take their opportunity to read what has been included in today's packet, and that can be easily obtainable. And if they have questions about that, I encourage them to be in touch with me. But I see no way for us to do what people would have liked to have done.
I was very disappointed by the findings, and I, kicking and screaming, came to agree with them. It's just not, it does not make sense, in my view, to spend that kind of money. I also would like to say that while it is definitely possible for folks to filter the water at their homes, those filtration systems are not free, and we do have a certain segment of the population that are living very close to the edge. So I am going to be looking into areas to hopefully help those people if they want to filter their water. And I encourage anyone that has any ideas along those lines to please email me and see if we can figure something out. Thanks.
I do want to say that our water is very safe, and you can, we have an annual water report that will show you trace elements. I mean, my understanding was the major reason for wanting, maybe this is wrong, but I thought the major reason for wanting to get water directly from the spring was so it wasn't chlorinated. So, you know, and so then you don't have the chlorine taste, which the filtering system will take out. But, yeah, I mean, our water is, I always read the report, and, you know, and there is nothing, I'm not seeing anything that would indicate that we should be in the slightest bit concerned about drinking the water. If you don't like the taste of it, then, yeah, you can do things to.
That's absolutely true. I don't think anyone ever questioned the safety of our water. I think it's more about personal preference than anything.
Right, okay. All right, just checking. Nancy, please, come on up.
At the last meeting, Stu was a fountain of information about why it wouldn't work. That's all I needed to hear. Unfortunately, it took a front-page article on the front page of the Bennington Banner for Stu to get that information. I waste time asking the same question for years because nobody on the select board over the past two years said, "Stu, get us the information." If you had done that two years ago, that would have been the end of it for me. But it goes on and on and on.
But Nancy, now we have the answer, so.
But Jeanne, it shouldn't have taken two years on the Bennington Banner. You're the employer and the supervisor of the town manager. If one of you had said, "Stu, get the information," that could have been the end of it.
Nancy, we just did, all right? So problem solved. I mean, so now we have the information.
The problem could have been solved two years ago, Jeanne, but none of you asked Stu to get you the information.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, no. So next up, Dan is up. So now, we're going to hear about the bike pedestrian trails update with Mark Anders and Dan Monks. And this is a follow-up for those who are able to go on our humid but lovely walk at 5:00 PM.
I just want to thank the subcommittee for doing the work on Morgan Spring.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, first of all, thanks, everybody, for, went with us on the site visit to the rail trail project. I did all the talking on that site visit, so I'm going to make Mark do most of the talking here. Plus, he put together the slideshow, so he's much more familiar with it, but I'll jump in as needed. And we are very excited about the work that's starting to really come together on our bike path projects. As Mark's going to talk about, we're focused, this presentation is focused on our mixed, our bike path projects, not on our hiking trails or on our sidewalks, which could be a whole other presentation. But this is going to be focused on those multi-use trails, and Mark will be talking about that. And I'll jump in as needed, and certainly, we'll try to go quickly, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. So with that, I'm going to have Mark Anders, who's the Bennington County Regional Commission Transportation Planner, award-winning, I might add, just won an award upstate for the Orchard Village-Willbrook pathway. So congratulations to Mark. And I'm going to let him take it away, and I'll jump in as necessary, and certainly feel free to ask his questions as we go through the slides. But go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so I'm Mark Anders from the Bennington County Regional Commission. And these projects that we're talking about take a long time. They take many years to do, so it seems like every few years, we come to the select board and just give a little update. So first of all, just to define, what is a shared-use path? I'll be talking about shared-use paths a lot. This is a shared-use path. This is actually the path that goes between Amherst and North Hampton. And a shared-use path is just a path that non-motorized transportation can use, you know, bikes, walking, running, rollerblades. And this is the Asher-Williams click rail trail in Adams. And this is like a really extreme example of a shared-use path. It's more like a shared-use highway. And you can see why it's called a shared-use path. You can see cyclists, people walking, there's a rollerblader. If this were a more recent picture, you'd probably see people on those little motorized scooters.
Mark, can I stop you for one sec? Can everyone hear? It seems like the microphone's really soft. Is there?
If you could speak slowly and, yeah, right into the microphone.
All right, like that.
It's really hard to hear. It's so hard to hear. And I don't want to miss a word.
Sure, I'll be like a rock singer and just grab it like that. Okay. And we have, this has been part of a long, kind of a long-term planning effort. Some of these projects have been in the works for, well, the rail trail's been in the works for about 25 years, I think. So what this map shows, it shows all the projects that are done or are planned or under construction. So the simple way to look at it is the dotted lines are the projects that are planned, and the green lines are the projects that are completed. You can see that there's a lot of projects that are still in the works. And the idea is really to create a network, you know, so we don't have a rail, a path to nowhere. You can get from one path to another. That's really the goal, is to have a network of paths.
So, Mark, maybe we can just, can you go back to that slide? Maybe we can just do a quick update on the major projects, and then we can go into some detail about what those projects look like and where they are now in specifics. But maybe just going through that list, the Ninja Path, as you know, is, it basically goes from the footbridge by the golf course all the way up through to the Bennington College entrance. And we like to think of it as going beyond through the college campus into North Bennington, and also connecting to the rail trail, which we talked about earlier, and connecting down to the downtown of a Loomsack pathway. So that particular project is in permitting. We're about to submit for our Act 250 permit, and unfortunately, Act 250 permits are taking an inordinate length of time now, but if we are lucky, we might actually be able to get construction to the next phase completed in 2023. As you know, as most of you folks know, there was that, the part of the Ninja Trail is behind the Walmart. That was constructed as Act 250 condition and local permit condition for the Walmart. And also, the town constructed the portion from Hannaford Plaza to the Bennington College entrance in partnership with the town, with the college. And they actually maintain it and plow it in the winter and everything, so we're very grateful for their efforts. The part that we're focusing on now is the connection from Walmart all the way up to the Hannaford Plaza. So that's the next section, and that will be built in phases. The first phase is to get the bridge built across Furnace Brook. As you know, there's a temporary path there now. Unfortunately, the temporary bridge was recently destroyed, so we are anxious to get the permanent bridge installed so that we can get folks back moving on that trail. So again, we're into permitting on that, and we hope to get our Act 250 permit and begin construction on the bridge in 2023. The next project on that list, the Bennington Rail Trail, we walked at today. As Mark mentioned, that's a 25-year-old project, started back when Helen White was Community Development Director, I think, Stuart, if that's accurate. And Michael McDonough, I know, was part of the genesis of that project as well. That is under construction and will be constructed, will be completed in October of 2022. That runs from Bennington Station all the way up to Emma Street, which is off of Northside Drive, which is, most folks know, the Dunkin' Donuts is at that intersection, and it's the Walmart-Roundabout intersection there. That, that particular project, as I mentioned, will be wrapping up no later than October, according to our contract. The other, the next project is the, it's called Applegate there, but we know it's Orchard Village, and we corrected that later on, but we didn't catch it here. That's Orchard Road, Orchard Village-Willbrook pathway. That's that pathway that connects Orchard Village to Willowbrook and on to the Molly Stark School, and we have lots of slides on that to show you. The other, the other project is the Kosher Drive path, which connects the East Road path to the rail trail. That's up and running. We'll have some more slides on that. And as folks know, the East Road pathway is actually one of our first path projects, but the real beginning, the real, it all really began with the Loomsack pathway in downtown, which we have just received some funding to upgrade, and that will be connected to the rail trail project. So we'll have a seamless connection from Loomsack pathway to the rail trail and on to the Ninja Path. So that's kind of a quick summary. We'll go through in more detail on each one of those projects, but I just want to make sure folks know where we are with those projects. And then Mark's going to talk about what those projects entail and give you some fun details about those projects. So, Mark, carry it away. Continue. Yes, sir. I don't get to use it. I think this is the first time in 10 years I got to use it.
Okay, so first, we'll talk about this, as Dan mentioned. This is the Kosher Drive path. And what it does is it connects to, between the rail trail and the East Road path, which goes up to the high school. And it also crosses Route 7, which is really important, because before it was built, a lot of students walked from the middle school and the high school and crossed Route 7 and walked along that road, and it was really not a very good situation, especially at the intersection. The intersection was sort of, you go there and you'd see these heart-stopping scenes of kids racing across the intersection. You know, it's really, this really is not pedestrian, was not pedestrian-friendly at all. You know, that's the, this is the limited access highway here, so this was, this is really pretty awful. I mean, we want students to walk to school as much as possible for health reasons and just for all kinds of reasons, so this was not inviting. So now, we have the shared-use path. So I think it's a big improvement, and you probably recognize the guy in the mask. Now there's pedestrian signal, crosswalk, the road is a little bit narrower, one turning lane was taken out, so it's much safer to cross. And we got a really cool bridge out of it, too. I think the bridge came out really well. So the next project was built last fall, the Orchard Village to Willowbrook path. And I apologize if I call it the Applegate path, because it used to be called the Applegate path, but now it's Orchard Village. This project came out about 10 years ago because the principal of the Molly Stark School here called me and said that students from Orchard Village miss school a lot more than students from Willowbrook, because students from Willowbrook just walked across the street to school, whereas kids from Orchard Village, there's no safe walking route from Orchard Village to the school. There was just Orchard Road, which was not very nice to walk on at all. And Route 7A, the underpass, was absolutely treacherous. This is what Orchard Road looks like. It would have been really expensive to put sidewalks along here. You would have had to add a tremendous amount of fill. Lots of people walking along Orchard Road, walked along Orchard Road. And Orchard Village and Willowbrook are so close together. This is a view from Orchard Village to Willowbrook. And a lot of people were so desperate, they made, they kind of took matters into their own hands and made this, this bridge with a shopping cart. own hands, and made this, this bridge with a shopping cart and a board. And this picture, by the way, has been gold for getting grant money, it's kind of famous at V-Trans. So, this is kind of a before picture, this is the sidewalk that goes towards Orchard Village, and this is what it looks like now. And we had a really nice ribbon cutting, Jeannie was there, and other Select Board members were there. And just another shot of the, the project. A lot of it is boardwalked, because there's so much wetlands and there's streams, which is one of the things that made it really challenging. And it's designed to accommodate bikes, it is wide enough for that. There are two short sections of gravel, and the rest of it is two sections of boardwalk, and it's also lit at night, which I think is a really nice feature. So Jeff Goldstone and MSK Engineering and Design did a great job designing the project. And this is what it looks like at night. And this is like a before picture, and that's what it looks like, what it looks like today. So we're really happy with the way that one came out, so we can like check that project And the Bennington Rail Trail, this is really Dan's baby, so why don't I let Dan talk about this one?
So some of this will probably be repeat for folks that went on the, went on the trip this afternoon, the site visit. As we mentioned, it runs from essentially the Bennington Station, former rail station, all the way to Emma Street, which is the road where Dunkin' Donuts is located, and it's the, next to the Walmart Roundabout. And as we mentioned, that's being constructed right now. This is kind of what it looked like before, it's actually a fairly old picture, it actually grew in a little bit more than that recently, it was almost impassable. This is the current state of it now. The portion of the rail trail that, it runs from Bennington Station to Orchard Road will be paved, the portion from Orchard Road to Emma Street will remain gravel, it'll be a sure pack surface, it'll be a smooth surface, but it will not be paved. Does not mean we can't pave it someday, and I would hope that as people use it, they'll probably want it to be improved further, and we'd be, you know, we would be considering making those improvements as we go along. This is what it looks like, well, actually, this is a little bit, a couple of days old, because they have started to clear that crossing, but that's where, what it looks like at County Street, the County Street Crossing. And as we saw today, probably one of the more interesting features is the railroad trestle, which will be redecked to accommodate bikes and pedestrians, and Bruce and I found the, the little badge on it that indicated that was built in 1908. So, this is the end of the trail at Emma Street, you can see the monument there, that's right at the circle, the circle, the traffic circle or the roundabout, and that will provide direct pedestrian and bike access to the, to the sidewalk network on, on Northside Drive there. So, that's the current terminus, we would hope to extend it further onto Orchard Village at some point, but that's for, for future projects. Let's see. Okay. All right, next is the Ninja Path, and I'll just introduce this, because one of the things that we've been talking about with regard to the Ninja Path, so maybe start thinking, we've had some folks, and I tend to agree that this is kind of a cool temporary name because of the history of how this was developed, and Mark will be talking about that, Ninjas had some part in it. But we think as it becomes constructed and paved and much more improved, that, that we perhaps needs to have more grown-up name. And lots of folks have thrown things out there, Loomsack Valley Pathway, Loomsack Pathway, we already called the Downtown Pathway, the Loomsack Pathway, so lots of different things, but we would definitely like to have folks start thinking about that, what makes sense. And before our first ribbon cutting on the, on the next phase, we'd love to have some sort of consensus that the Select Board can give us on, on what, what you'd like, like us to call it. But anyways, start thinking for the community as well as the Select Board, what's the next, what's a grown-up name for the Ninja Path? So, anyways, Mark.
So the goal of the Ninja Path is to get between College Drive, which connects to Bennington College, and which also connects to North Bennington, all the way to downtown Bennington. This is really the key connector. And the little green part there has already been built, that goes from the intersection, the 67A College Drive intersection, to, to kind of Hannaford and Hampton Inn. And then, the red part is the federally funded project that we've been working on for quite a while now. You know, all of the 16 easements that we needed, if, and we have, we've had, we've got all, almost all the permits, design is almost all done. So we hope to build this Phase 1 next, next year. And the really key part there is the bridge over the Furnace Brook, that's the, that's the most difficult and expensive part of the project. So if we can get that done, we're, we're really in good shape. And then you can take it here, and then this, this path that goes behind Walmart has already been built, and then you can take Hicks Ave, which is a very low traffic street, and you can go over the, the pedestrian bike, bed bridge at Hicks Ave near the golf course, and then down Hunt Street, and then you're on Benmont, and we have a project on Benmont, too. So this is really the connector path between North Bennington, Bennington College, and downtown. And this just shows kind of the need, you know, this is, we call this a path of desire, this is along 67A, so obviously people are walking along 67A, but there's no infrastructure for them. There are some sidewalks, but they're discontinuous. You know, you'd have to hop over that muddy, muddy river to get onto the sidewalk. This is just a picture of the 67A College Drive entrance, this is, this is temporary, by the way. There is a big state project to put a roundabout in there, so that will happen in the next few years, hopefully. More shots, it's been very popular with the Bennington College community. And, now this picture explains the origin of the name. This, this picture goes way back, and there was a group of citizens that were so frustrated that this project was taking so long, and there are so many bureaucratic hurdles, that they would just go out on the weekends and try to clear the path themselves, and they called themselves Ninjas. And that's, that's how the, the project got its nickname, the Ninja Path. So that's, that's that project, and I think it's really exciting, and I really hope we can start construction next year. The last project, big project I'll talk about, is the Benmont Ave Active Transportation Corridor, doesn't have a very catchy name, but that's what it's called. So I'm sure you all know where Benmont Ave is, so what we're looking at is the intersection between Benmont Ave and Hunt Street, so that's a northern part of the project. And the, the idea is to take the existing shoulder of the road and turn it into a path along the road to the, to the Benmont Mill, and then it would just be bike lanes all the way down, because there's existing sidewalk there. And this is really to show the need, I mean, we've all been down Benmont Ave, and seen people walking in the shoulder, and they're, they're really not accommodated by that infrastructure. And another, another big part of it is, there are huge accesses, driveway accesses. You know, really, these things shouldn't be more than 20 or 40 feet wide, but this one is 618 feet wide, and it's really dangerous, because people shoot out, and they shoot in, in cars, and there've been a lot of crashes here over the years. So this is, project is an opportunity to really fix this problem, too. So what I'm talking about is, this is the shoulder that will become the path, and we're going to do that by, it's really simple, actually, we're just going to use mostly existing pavement, and just putting in these, these islands of grass and trees and granite curbs to make this, to make this path. Another big part of the project is the Hunt Street intersection, really hard to cross, it's hard to drive through, it really doesn't work well for anybody, and it's complicated, too, because the bus depot is there. So this is the plan, this is Hunt Street, this is Benmont, so the idea is to straighten out the intersection, so Hunt Street comes in at a right angle, and to move the, the bus depot entrance to here, right now it's right here, so that'll make it work better. And this is the, this is the shared use path here, and it all leads onto Hunt Street, because Hunt Street is where you connect to the bike, existing bike bed bridge, and where you can get over to that part of town, and to the Ninja Path. And then these things here are the, the islands that will, that will tame that huge 618-foot driveway access, so those are trees. And I think this will make it much safer and much more attractive, too, it's really, it's really not a very attractive part of town, and I think this will be, make it much, much nicer, I'm really excited about this.
As we did talk today on the site visit, we do, would hope to see a connection from the rail trail, which is just up there, yes, is a, we'd love to see a connection either there and that, in the vicinity of that location, so that we could connect the rail trail to, to the Benmont Avenue infrastructure, as well as getting over to Hunt Street and on to the Ninja Path, as it is currently called. So that's, that's what we discussed today, and, and what we'd hope to see, and we're continuing to work with property owners to see if we could get an easement for that, because we do think that will become quite a well-used corridor, once, especially once we get the rail trail completed, so.
The last thing I'll talk about is, one thing you have, we have to think, keep in mind is, you can build a shared use path, but people need to get to them. So we, BCRC did a little study about possible, little mini path projects to better access the, the big path projects. And if you want to see the study, it's, it's on the BCRC website, so we, I'm not going to go through all this, but we identified many, many really small projects that could be done, once these larger path projects start to be, start to be built. So just as one example, this is, this is Orchard Road, and this is where the rail trail is being built, and that's the entrance to Willowbrook. And a lot of people walk right on this side of Orchard Road, and it's really not very pedestrian-friendly at all, so, you know, one idea would be to connect it with a really short path. So that's an example of a, of a connecting, small connecting project. Another one, I'm going to skip this slide, because it's a little bit confusing. Another one is, this is Benmont Ave, and this will be the rail trail, and that's Tasty Freeze. And if you live, live over here, there's no way to get, you know, to this part of town, there's really this kind of big area that is a huge kind of wall. So the idea would be to build a short connecting path from kind of the Leonard Street-Benmont Ave intersection to the rail trail, then over to Tasty Freeze, and from there you could get to the core complex, you could get to the veterans home, and you could even get to the high school. And we actually got an easement for this, so we have all, up to there, we have all the right-of-way we need to connect to the rail trail, and hopefully eventually we can connect all the way to Route 7, but I think that would be a very simple project to do. And the last thing I'll mention, this is a much more, is much bigger, more ambitious project than anything we've talked about tonight, but BCR, BCRC did a scoping study to look at the feasibility of connecting Bennington and Williamstown with a, with a shared use path, because there used to be a trolley that went between Bennington and Williamstown and North Adams, and we looked at whether we could reuse the trolley bed to put a path in. And it's exciting, because the Ashawaltukac Rail Trail from Pittsfield is eventually going to connect to North Adams, and there are plans to connect it to Williamstown, and actually, the purple path here between Williamstown and the North Adams border is being built now, they're almost done with it. And these, this project is being designed, so it'd be really awesome, like, super long-term to connect from North Adams to Bennington. So, just wanted to put that, put that project out there.
Questions or comments?
Does anybody have any questions?
I actually have more of a comment. Today was the first time I actually walked the rail trail at all, and it really struck me that what a great opportunity this is going to be for people that want to get to the Northside Drive businesses, to be able to get there safely on foot if they choose to do so. And it's really just, it's such a neat walk, because it's so peaceful, and Route 7 is right there. And, and it's just absolutely amazing, and I think this is just a huge benefit for town, I just want to commend you guys for your work.
So, Tom touched on a couple of things, so the great thing about these projects is they're, they serve a, two, at least two purposes, many more, but at least two primary purposes, they're transportation corridors, but they're also recreation corridors. So they get people from A to B safely, but they are also something that folks can enjoy and, and do as a recreation activity as well. So, we're very, we're very excited to see these projects finally starting to come online after many years of slogging through right-of-way and permitting, et cetera, and funding, which is always a problem as well, but thanks, Tom, for that observation. I do, I always thought the rail trail would be great, but until it was actually built, you didn't know how great it was going to be, and it's, I invite everybody to check it out, and it should be done very soon for folks, even, they can use their bikes, bikes and everything, but even now, after hours, when the equipment's not operating, it'd be, it's great to walk it and check it out, so.
Dan, with respect to the, the trail out here, you said that is going to be paved, right?
Yes, so yes and no, so the answer is partially. It will be paved from the Bennington Station to Orchard Road, fully paved, and then from Orchard Road to Emma Street, it will be a sure pack surface, so it'll still be a smooth surface, but it won't be actually paved with a bitumenous pavement. However, that could be changed in future years, we could certainly pave it.
And how about lighting?
So there won't be any additional lighting, there'll be lighting at the crossings because of the, the roadways, but like most, like the Ashawaltukac, most rail trails, they don't have additional lighting along the, the trail, because they're somewhat outside of town. Now, the trail on, at the Orchard Road, the Orchard Village-Willbrook Trail does have lighting, because it's, you know, between two very densely populated sectors, but most rail trails don't have lighting, don't have separate lighting.
Okay, last question. The overgrowth on both sides of the trail, will that be cleared, so that, you know, you know, there's less likely...
So that's a great question, we had that several times while we were on the walk, and the, the answer is, our intention is to keep that, keep the corridor as wide as it is now, so in other words, we won't be mowing it, so it's like a lawn, but two or three times a year, we will get the mower out, the highway mower out, and make sure that that, that growth doesn't become significant, it will always be knocked down two or three, four times a year, depending upon how quickly the growth comes up.
This is quite wide right now, I don't know how much space there's on either side, but...
Our intention would be to maintain that, and as you can see with the, with the roadside mower, we have that ability with the arm that can go out, that we can, because it's a, it's wide enough for that mower to go on, they will be able to mow through there a few, a few times a year.
Yeah, and you had a nice, you had a nice picture, I think, that showed how wide the...
Yeah.
The borders are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Looks good. Did you want questions?
Yeah, just two quick ones. I'm assuming you don't know if the attendance changed for the better once the Orchard Village path was completed, do you know? And if, it'd be wonderful to find that out.
I would love to know. One problem was, we opened it in the middle of COVID, so all the statistics and all that stuff has been kind of messed up.
Yeah, COVID messed it up.
It'd be really nice to know.
Yeah. And my other, my other question, it came up actually today from someone that was on the walk, was where to park? And when there's map development of where the trails go, is there a way to signify that you could park here? It may not be a designated parking place, but this would be a great place to park your car to jump on.
Yeah, so that's really one thing we want to focus on, and we'll be working with Jonah on. There already is a map of, of some of our trails that they, Chamber has on their website, but we want to build on that and improve it, and definitely parking is an important part, how to, how can people park? How do we convey the information clearly? And that's something we're going to work on with Jonah, to make sure we get that up on our website as these trails come online, especially once the rail trail is completed, we think that's going to be kind of the kickoff, where people will really see the, the trail network start to take off. And we really consider that the backbone, where everything kind of takes off from. Once that's done, we'll be able to really focus on that, that effort. So, very good point, something we really need to highlight and develop is a, is a good trail, a good trail, our bike path map...
Right.
...that we can post online and folks can easily access, so point well taken, and we'll be working with Jonah on that.
Thanks.
Sarah, you have a question?
No.
Bruce?
Yep. Couple of things, I had also wondered about parking locations and how we're going to do that, and designate, or find a way to do that. I like the idea of having it connected to our own website. Also signage, it seems to me, is going to be really important, as I recall on a variety of these kinds of paths that I've been on, and including distances, so mileage, too, you know, so that those of us with little kids in tow know how, and know how far we want to go before we want to... want to go before we want to turn around, or at least stop and get ice cream. And the last thing I would at least raise with all of us, is, yes, I, I found it really wonderful to walk on there, and, and I would, I'm torn about encouraging people to walk on there even now, and if only because having a family that grew up in the railroad business, that the Gerder Bridge that is there does not have a deck that is safe. And it would, I would hope that at the very least, until such time as there is a deck that is safe, that there be some kind of signage that we could put up, that would at least give people a, a warning that that's not a safe structure to walk on. And, and so, as much as I would encourage people to see this in the evening, when the machinery isn't running, I'm concerned about that part.
Right, so we would certainly ask, and we'll be, we'll make sure that, I'm going to actually prompt it, made it to make a note, that I'm, I'm going to check with our contractor, Markowski, they should be, they should be closing off that bridge, too, so that folks can't easily access it, because it isn't ready for, for use yet. So, we, yeah, so I would say that, you know, check the sections out, but don't, please don't cross that pedestrian bridge till it's completed.
No, because it's right now not a pedestrian bridge.
Right, it is not.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have just orange tape across it, something.
Yeah, something.
So, is that, is the map, is this, are these maps available on our website right now?
I was going to ask that, too.
Yeah.
The, these maps are not. There's some, there's some, there is a trail map on, on the Chamber's website, but it's not as detailed as this, and that is something we're going to work on with Jonah, is try to get something out.
Yeah, the aspirational map that you showed.
Even the connector map, I thought, was particularly, the one that just prior to this, would be very helpful.
So, we can do an existing, proposed, and so that folks can see what we already have, and what we're, what we're hoping to do. So, we'll work with Jonah on that, for sure. Thank you.
Great. Any other board questions? Gary?
I just want to say, this is really exciting to see this, the idea that we can tie into Williamstown, Pittsfield, just to be able to have that much trail system. It's just a super thing for us to have.
Sam, please, come on.
Sam Rostino of Bennington, Vermont. It's taken 59 years to have this. 10 years old, I walked the rails when I went to my Ollie Stark School. That was my rail trail, with a train running. And don't think my parents weren't scared about looking over your shoulder each time Vermont Railway, when that was in operation, and especially at Tasty Freeze, you remember the trains that were there. Hearing all this, budget, maintenance, funding, winter, patrols. Obviously, this is not going to be open in the wintertime, when we have about four feet of snow, right?
I have no idea.
You have no idea? I mean, is there going to be a time limit, where this is going to be closed because of winter?
I doubt it'll be closed, I think people will just walk in.
Well, people will still walk on there, but, you know, with liability, if you're going to, some trails, you're going to have to salt or whatever, especially between going through Willowbrook and Applegate, something to think about with liability. Patrols, the police department, you've got pedestrian traffic, we had an incident this week near Pizza Hut, where perpetrators were on that rail trail. Now, you're going to have our Bennington Police Department going on the rail trail. This opens up to a lot of problems down the road. Funding, budgeting, maintenance, this is going to take a lot. We've got a brand-new toy right now, it's not going to last 10 years. I'm, I know I got putting this horse before the cart, but this is something that we all have to think about, and who knows? Positions, Recreation Division, about taking care of the trails, mowing, cutting, trimming, spraying for, for vegetation. And also, with the New York State and the Erie Canal, they're opening up biking. You think about the Appalachian Trail, this is going to be a biking trail. We've got a goal line here. If we get something where we're going to have through bicyclists, where they ship their luggage coming up through, that's where our, our tour attentionment is going to be coming through. So, if New York State is talking about the Erie Canal and their bike path, we need to tap on that, to, in case when they come into our area.
Well, at least to Williamstown, right? At least to Williamstown, yeah.
Well, if it's going to be connecting the Vets, to Williamstown and Pownell.
Yeah, so, so Sam, I do think, I think your points are well-taken, and I, I think as we walk the rail trail.
I mean, this is not going to happen overnight, 10 years.
Sam, as we walk the rail trail, many of those, it does sound like the town has taken many of these concerns into, into account, and is prepared, so, so it's good. Thank you. Nancy?
I remember, it must have been at least 15 or 20 years, the state said we couldn't use the tracks that you walked on tonight, and that's why Benmont Avenue took the place of it. And I remember there were public discussions and meetings with the property owners and business owners about the trail and having the bike path down there. What I want to have somebody start being honest about is the bike path, the bike trails you want to put on the streets. I, I asked three years ago, nobody will answer. I've been looking at the proposed bike path behind the Putnam Block on Franklin Lane. If somebody wants a bike path there, obviously, they want to connect it someplace else. I, I wish kids could ride their bikes like we did when I grew up. We'd go all over town to Pownell, you can't. And you can't take the public parking on the streets away, because people have to have their cars to shop and eat and work in Bennington. And I'm pretty sure it was the BCRC website three years ago, where I did see a plan for the town of Bennington. I saw the bike path the length of County Street, it was North Branch Street and a couple of others. And I should have been smart enough to print it off, because nobody, the, the plan has disappeared. But the public has got to be able to have a say, before you take away the public parking on the streets. This is great, but you can't take away the parking on the streets.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? Well, that was very exciting, and we are looking forward to the connections between all these pathways, and.
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate the continued Select Board support. Because these projects are multi-year projects, we've had sustained Select Board support, and that's been very gratifying, and we thank you very much for that. You and previous Select Boards, and hopefully, future Select Boards, as we continue to build out this bike path network.
Last 25 years worth of Select Boards, it sounds like.
So, thank you very much, we very much appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's great. All right, so, another exciting topic. So, the solar array contract on, I was going to say, sit down.
Sit down.
Sorry about that, I totally forgot about that one, then. So, all right, next topic, let me just find my memo here on this. So, I guess several months ago, we were approached by a solar company, MHG Solar. Actually, it's a Manchester-based company, the Hand family, Thomas Hand is, is one of the principals. I think most people know the Hand family from Manchester, prominent family. And Thomas has, has been running for several years, a solar company. And he approached town staff several months ago about the possibility of, of constructing a solar array on the former landfill site off of Holton Lane. I said, you know what, Select Board is very interested in renewable energy projects, the landfill has virtually no value, except possibly as a solar array site. And so, I said, why don't you submit a proposal? And he did, and you folks reviewed it and said, you know, said, directed staff to work with the Hands, or Thomas, and his team to develop a lease, so that's what we did. That lease is, the general terms of that lease are a three-year due diligence period, which would have meant, would begin immediately upon signature. Then this would be followed by a 25-year operational lease, and with, let's see, it's three, five-year extensions. So, it would be possibly a very long-term lease for a solar array on the former landfill site. The annual rent proposed is fairly modest, for several reasons, which we can talk about. It's only $1,000 a year, but the anticipated annual municipal tax is $30,000. So, it isn't, it is a significant benefit to the town. And I would argue, even if there was no financial benefit to the town, as long as there wasn't a financial detriment, it would still make you, make sense to use this land that is virtually worthless, except for this, perhaps this type of use. It's a capped landfill, no one will ever be able to build structures on it. And in fact, that is one of the reasons why it is such a challenge to redevelop that site, because whoever, whoever does install solar array there has to deal with the Agency of Natural Resources, Equal Protection Agency, they have to bring three-phase power from quite a ways away. There's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of nuances to this site that doesn't exist on a typical solar site, where you're just building on, where you can just drive posts in the ground, and that's your, that's your support for your arrays. This one's going to require significant infrastructure on top of the ground, because they cannot pierce the cap. So, there is a lease before you this evening that is proposed. Based on those terms, I would, staff recommends that you accept the proposal. Obviously, it's your decision, but if, if you guys do feel comfortable with this lease moving forward, we would ask that you authorize the town manager to sign the lease. One of the things that is to be determined is the exact boundary. We do have some general boundaries shown in the lease, but we're going to, not we, but the applicant, or the, the solar company will be doing a survey, and then we'll be looking very closely at the property to make sure that there's an exact location where their solar array can go, that doesn't interfere with town operations. So, that's, that particular boundary line, the exact boundary is to be determined, that's spelled out in the lease, about them getting a survey, and then, then we would all have to agree on that surveyed area before the lease premises, exact lease premises is, is determined. What else, what am I missing? Ask questions, you know, I'm happy to ask, answer questions about what you may have about this.
So, we'll start, we'll, we'll start. Gary, do you have an immediate question?
I have a couple.
Okay, go for it.
Little ones. Do we know where transmission lines would be going?
No, we do not, no exactly. There is, there is discussed in the lease, in the lease agreement, that there will be one corridor with an easement in the, in the area that is determined to be appropriate by Green Mountain Power, and as well as the applicant and, and the town, so. But there will be one corridor of, of, of transmission lines going to the project.
So, the reason I'm asking is just in terms of neighborhood impact for the neighbors, where that transmission line might be. Would this go through Act 250 process?
No, it would go through 248, the 248 process, before the Public Utilities Commission. So, it's similar to Act 250, but it's for utilities, they have exclusive jurisdiction over utility generation, power generation projects. The corridor would follow public rights away on the street, and the only area that would be, that's undetermined, would be where it goes through our property, and there's no houses or anything on the landfill site. So, it wouldn't be a negative impact for, for, for neighborhood folks. It would just be poles along the street, and then it would go into the property.
It mentions a, a three-year period, up to three-year period, to do due diligence on the property. What, what types of things are we going to be looking at, are they going to be looking at?
So, the biggest thing is going to be sitting down with EPA, with the EPA, the Equal Protection Agency, and the agency, Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, and determining how they, how the site will be allowed to be used. In other words, do they put concrete blocks on the ground, and then put posts in those? Is that going to work? There's lots of different things there, as Stuart well knows, there's strict requirements about how that site is to be maintained. You cannot pierce the cap. You have to be very, very careful not to destroy the integrity of the, of the cap on that, on that landfill. So, EPA and A&R is going to be looking at this very carefully. There's going to be lots of discussions between them, the developer, as well as the town, because it's our property, we're going to want to make sure that whatever is done is done carefully and appropriately. I would imagine, though, that the EPA and A&R will be the toughest ones to, to satisfy, because they, they understand that this is very important, to keep this site safe, this site safe. That being said, this is not a new idea. Cap landfills have sprouted solar arrays all over the country, so there is a way forward, it's just not a simple and straightforward one. It will require some negotiation with the EPA and the, and the Agency of Natural Resources, and that's what MHG will do in the next few years. They also have to look at, what's the cost to bring in the transmission lines? If it's, if it's too much, they, they may not have a project. You know, they've got to look at what is, what are the, are they going to be able to attract investors to this site? This site, again, it's very complicated, it's not your basic site, where you just, you know how much it's going to cost to install, and you just build it, and it's cookie-cutter. This is going to be unique, with a lot of restrictions on it that a typical site doesn't have. So, there are all those sorts of issues, what they'll be looking at over the next three years. They're going to want to make sure that what we're doing on the site, which we feel pretty confident isn't going to, but they want to make sure that what we're doing on the site isn't going to negatively impact what they want to do. You know, we don't think there's any, going to be any significant conflicts, but we're going to have to talk about those, and make sure that that's not an issue for them, because we've clearly reserved the right for us to continue with our current operations, and any similar operations to what we're currently doing. So, it's first and foremost, public lands that needs to be continued, that needs to be used continuously for our Department of Public Works, and the landfill, the transfer station functions, et cetera. We don't see, we don't think there's going to be any conflicts, but they're going to want to feel comfortable about that, and so will their investors. So, all those sorts of things, and I'm sure there's hundreds of things that I'm not even thinking about, but it, the due diligence period, I'm surprised they didn't ask for a longer period of time, because usually, a normal project takes two years to do the due diligence, but they're only asking for three, so these folks have done this stuff before, they're not, this is not their first rodeo, so to speak, they've done solar arrays before, so they know what they're doing.
Yeah. Dan, I got a call over the weekend by former board member, Justin Cordgren, and he recalled to me the tennis bubble, and how they had gotten the leasing of that land at, what was it, like at a dollar a year, or something like that? Do you recall?
It's, did you notice?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay. But he also pointed out that the, the leasing was able to grieve the taxes on that, when there was an, actually, at the inception of the agreement, that there, it would be a set amount.
Actually, that, that's not entirely true, Jim. When, when the developer wanted to construct the tennis bubble there, the benefit to the community was not only to have an indoor tennis facility that would be available to the public for a fee, but also that, that would generate tax revenue for having that facility there. At the time, there was an estimated value of the property, that is, the bubble itself, and what that would generate in tax revenue. There was, there was no agreement as to what that would be, or whether or not it would be stable. And the developer did grieve his assessment, once it was installed successfully. So, the amount of money that we anticipated receiving for tax generation is less than what we thought it might be. But it's still, we still receive revenue, tax revenue from that site.
Was it dramatically reduced, from what?
I, I don't believe it was dramatic, but I, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
So, anyway, the, the point that Justin brought up to me is, you know, could there conceivably be parallels to, to this project, to that?
Well, as you and I discussed today on the phone, I think the way these facilities are assessed is set by the state government, or the Public Utilities Commission.
It's a state statute, it's a formula that the state uses, that John Antione, our assessor, has to use, he doesn't have any flexibility, so this, the assessed value of that property will be set by the state of Vermont's formula, so there, there really is no wiggle room, unless they convince the state to change the formula, but that's beyond our control, and would, and it would apply to all power generation facilities. So, the risk that you mentioned is, is a real one, if there, if there wasn't a statutory formula that they have to follow to determine assessed value. So, it's fixed by the state, we don't get to change it, and so, it should, that, as far as grieving their taxes, it's not an issue.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Yeah. I read the proposal, I won't say incredibly carefully, but as far as maintenance of the panels, replacement of the panels, I'm, I'm assuming that falls to the developer?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I, I think the public should know that this company has built solar arrays And I think the public should know that this company has built solar arrays in very difficult locations already. So when you say it's not their first rodeo, it really isn't their first rodeo. And I guess I'm just curious, the property tax assessment, would that start at the date of signage of the lease agreement? No.
It's, my understanding is it's tied to the date that they begin generation.
Of electricity?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I had one question about the array, the panels as well. When, I don't know if you might not know this, but I'll ask anyway. So if the panels are part of the array, it goes past its usable lifespan, are the, can the, can MSJEG have the life, the panels sit on the property when the panels are past their usable lifespan or do they have to take them off the property?
So the lease requires them to remove the equipment once the, once the lease is up and there'd be no reason for them to pay a lease payment and continue to pay taxes on something that isn't generating power. So they will, they are required to remove them once they're, once the lease is terminated.
Oh, oh, no. If they're still using a property with a new array, but they have?
So they can continually upgrade during the period of the lease term to new panels. They would, every time they do that, they need to go back to the Public Utilities Commission and get approval. This is a very highly regulated environment. So anything they do, they'll have a decommissioning fund that the Public Utilities Commission will require them to have. It's, it's, it's one of the most highly regulated areas of business that you can, that you can take part in, in the state of Vermont.
Okay. So it will be gone within a few days?
It'll, well, it may not be a few days, but it will be certainly within 30 days.
Very likely.
All the, the equipment needs to be removed and needs to be left in its original condition to the town.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Dan.
I would guess though, based on the fact that they've built in the extensions, that they're probably looking at, you know, a 40-year lifespan for this project.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't ask that.
Sure. Good question.
Just one other thing, most of my questions have been asked. I'm curious, I guess it's, it's around the area of the, the uncertainty that we have at the moment about the, about the dimensions of, and the actual boundary, I guess is the term. Can you walk me through what you think the process will be as they, as they move through their due diligence period? I'm assuming that's one of the major issues to try to fair it out because you can't really go to the EPA until they, until you know what your boundaries are. Will this board have any say or any response to the requests based on this contract? I was, that's where I was trying to wrestle with.
So I don't want to overstate how big of a deal this is because it's very minor. If you look at Exhibit B.
Right.
It will be no more than that. It will be no more than that. We're comfortable with that amount of, comfortable with that area. They, it's in their best interest not to be responsible for any more property than they absolutely have to be. So, especially since it's a capped landfill, they don't want to be responsible for any area that's not covered by income generating equipment. So they're going to be looking at this. They're going to find out what the area is within that blue demarcated.
Within the blue line.
Yep. And they will be shrinking that, if anything, not expanding it. So this is the extent of it and it will definitely, it is very likely to become a little bit smaller. The only other thing is there is an explicit carve-out for any location in the casella lease for the transfer station, which may extend just a few feet into that blue boundary. So that will be removed from any final lease premises area defined as well. So that's the whole genesis of that. Bruce, it's not because they want to grab more land, it's because they don't want to be responsible for any more than they have to.
I was assuming that, but I wanted to hear that specifically. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the board? All right, community questions. Sam, you're up.
Sam Bernstein of Bennington, Vermont, and I have a title on this one. I'm a licensed journeyman electrician, so I come in with expertise. This is not our first rodeo. This is the second time that this landfill has been looked at for solar power. Am I correct, Stu? Back in what, 1999, 20 years, 15 years ago, a developer made a proposal in front of a board to ask to see if they could put solar array on our landfill? I can't remember what year it was.
Nothing official.
It was a poor presentation, I remember that.
Yeah, but I don't think it ever came to fruition.
No, it didn't.
Because that developer wasn't willing to carry it through.
Right.
So this is really the first hard proposals that we have.
Right. And I know the issue was not penetrating that cap. That's the main issue.
And that is true.
Secondly, and I'm putting the horse before the cart, until this gets found out how the solar array is going to be built or not, is this going to be directly going on the grid or is it going to be net metering or is Bennington going to benefit from this? We've got a lot of solar arrays around here. I don't know about you, but I haven't seen my electric bill go down yet.
Basically, this will be tied to the grid. Bennington already, all of our metered uses are already covered and Dan's got this in more detail because he negotiates these things. We are already using all renewable energy for all of the power that the town of Bennington utilizes. We have the solar project south of town and we have the hydro project at the paper mill that we benefit from. We get net metering agreements on those things. So all of our power is already produced from renewable sources. This will be on the grid. I don't believe there's any individual customer that will be benefiting from this.
I don't believe it's going to be net metering for two reasons. It's, it's way bigger than a typical net metering project and the state has begun, the Public Utilities Commission has begun to frown on net metering because they think it causes a burden for the rest of the ratepayers. So it's, I, I, there has been no talk of a net metering project here.
Yes, please.
I'm Tom Seymour. I'm from Albany, New York. I heard about your project today because I listened to WEQX and Jeff announcing on the morning show. It's very exciting. I know you're a long way down the path, but I wanted to come over tonight and ask if you would give consideration to a second proposal to do the same on your landfill. I represent a company from New York City, AC Power, and we in fact also specialize in landfill developments. We currently have 19 under power and another six in development over four states. Thank you.
Great. I have no idea what the protocol is for this.
Me either.
I mean, you could, you could obviously, you know, submit a proposal. Yeah, I don't.
Does it include it in this proposal, is there any bona fide commitment from the town?
Well, yes. Once we sign the lease, yes.
No, 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 no.
I would consider that a bona fide commitment.
No, no, no. But at this point in time?
Well, I would say yes. I mean, it would be very difficult now that we have laid out the entire agreement before the public to have, unfortunately, another organization come in and say, we can do better than that. It is unfortunate, we were not aware that there was another company that might be interested. Here come the rain. But I think we're beyond that now. I think that these folks have laid their cards on the table to the extent that they need to and I think it would not be appropriate to put this aside and start looking at other proposals.
Well, what we have is, I mean, so we'll see, I mean, there's a three-year due diligence period, so.
Yeah, it may not come, it may not come. There are a lot of issues here.
There are. I mean, we've been waiting for someone to, to.
And remember, the landfill, capped landfill is a 15-acre site. The photograph that they, they include in their initial letter goes actually out beyond the capped landfill and incorporates some other site, portions of our site, our land that we use periodically for material and material storage. So those kinds of things have to be worked out. And remember, this is a landfill that is like a dome. They're going to be looking for all the south-facing land that they can find. Much of that is pretty steep. So I think from an engineering perspective, they've, they've got some real issues, I think, to deal with in trying to locate those solar arrays on that hillside because they cannot penetrate the cap. That is absolutely forbidden.
So it sounds like the answer is stay tuned, but not right this moment. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
Thank you for asking.
I think it's fair to say this is a very, very challenging site and there's no guarantee that we'll proceed, but as Jeanie mentioned, we've been reaching out, trying to find folks to work with us for at least a decade or more. And this is the first bona fide offer we've had. So I am appreciative that the hands, that Thomas Hand and his crew are willing to work with us and try to get this project off the ground.
Yeah, and I, I would just like to add, it thrills me that this is a local developer. We've all experienced, and I don't mean any disrespect, sir, we have had not a wonderful experience with an out-of-towner. And like I said, I'm not saying that you're one of them, but it's, yeah, we've lost a lot of sleep over this with that particular person or developer.
I have some PTSD from some, some project.
PTSD.
Nancy, you have a question? Okay, Nancy, and then you, sir.
I would ask you wait until the next meeting at least before you sign anything. I went to a Bennington Energy Board meeting last month. I don't think they even know about it, did they, Gary? I mean, there wasn't any discussion and these are the people I'd like to hear asking the questions. I would think that there might be citizens who might have some other questions too. I don't know anything about these projects, but if $30,000, that's the most we'd get for over 25 years each year?
It'll be three-quarters of a million dollars over the life.
It'll be what?
Three-quarters of a million dollars over the term of the agreement.
30 years?
Yeah. $750,000.
I don't know what these projects pay, but I'd like to know what the owners would be making in 10 or 15 years. If you've got a chance for somebody to give you another proposal, better, better deal, I mean, I'd wait to hear about that too.
So, thank you, Nancy.
I mean, you don't have to sign anything tonight, but it seems like it's kind of getting rushed right through.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir, please.
Hi, my name's Bob Kubelia. I live out on the West End and some of the board people know who I am, maybe not, but I've been here occasionally, but not in a few years. But I've worked with a few developers over the last 10 years and I was going to say the same thing. In fact, I talked to one today and he said, gee, I just read that article too and I'd like to give a proposal or at least an opportunity. And sometimes the best-kept secrets are the ones that maybe nobody knew that you all wanted to do something up there that was to the people that are movers and shakers. So I'd recommend checking it out, but in the same time, I'd recommend talking to some other communities that ran into this issue. I had a project in Lenox, Mass. They've had some heartburn with their land. They have a solar field that they put on and it never made much money. And the people that I've talked to down there on their conservation commission have not been thrilled with the end result. Maybe it's still a work in progress, but they've had expenses. So as a taxpayer in town, I'd want to make sure any lease agreement or long-term agreement you have is, give it some due consideration to make sure we're protected and we're not going to get hung on something that is going to be a ghost in our closet that as taxpayers we ought to cover. So that's my couple of comments about the solar thing. If you need another quota, I can give you another quota. And a while ago, I had had some serious conversations with Tommy Jacobs, our past chairperson on the Select Board. And it was in regards to the board taking and adopting the solar bylaws. The people in the rural conservation zone had no opportunity to give public comment. We weren't involved in that, but I've been shut out. I have a solar farm on my place, a 500 KW. You look right at it, I can see your yellow barn and I understand the, the way it is now, even though I had the permission from time began until the solar bylaws to have a solar site if it met specs, I can't today. And I don't believe that's right. Tom Jacobs and I talked that the board had just passed it. It was too early to try to get an amendment to either do spot zoning for my land or take a look at the whole idea of rural conservation not being allowed to have solar. Because you're going to find the cost to bring power, three-phase power, it may blow your town project right out of the water. We've got three-phase power at the bottom of my road because of the Vichy power plant or the chip plant. We've got it right there. So to underutilize that line at the expense of trying to bring a half a million dollar line into the landfill seems to be diametrically opposed and we're all trying to do the same thing of save the rural, make more energy. And I've got a lovely site that I would very much love to have the board come out and do a site visit like you did the trail. It's so impressive. You'd say, I can't believe you can't make solar here because you can. So that's my comments for today.
Okay, thank you.
And I know everybody's had a long day, so I'll let you get home for dinner.
Thank you very much. So this is, I mean, we have been discussing this for.
Yes.
A very, very long time.
That's what I wanted to point out. This was no secret about this property. It wasn't kept away from anybody. Nobody just stepped up and that, that has been true for over a decade.
I, I am casually aware that it was out there, but this is the first time it made the paper that I'm aware of.
Well, and it also is a preferred site. So I mean, I think anyone that's looking at the solar map knows what sites are there and the fact that it's expensive to bring in three-phase power.
You're absolutely right.
Has always been a huge obstacle. So if Thomas Hand sees a way to go forward, I'm like really happy that he can make this, you know, if he can make this work, that would, that would be great. He's incredibly reputable.
But should I send the guy with the third quote?
Say again?
Should I send the fellow to you that may want to make a third quote?
I don't, well, I don't know. What's the, does, what's the board's pleasure? Would someone like to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign the lease? Do we have a two-minute rule? No? No? Does someone want to make that, that motion?
I don't think so.
I'll make that motion for the purposes of discussion, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second for the purposes?
I think we need to discuss.
Yeah, I'll second for the same.
Okay. All right, discussion. Go for it.
I, I guess my issue here is that our desire to put, to make that space available for solar development, at least as far as I can recall, has been public and made public certainly since we made the map of preferred sites. And how many years is that, Dan, now at this point? I can't keep.
Eight.
Eight? I was going to say eight, for the last eight years. And yeah, it's true that, again, what this is going to do is trigger a three-year, a three-year process of due diligence. It's not going to necessarily foreclose anybody else. It might foreclose any other development of that property for solar if, if this project seems feasible. I appreciate, God knows, I appreciate folks coming all this way from Albany, from elsewhere or providing us with possibilities, but this has not been a secret. And I guess my concern is. And I guess my concern is, we've asked, we've known about the request, and we asked the staff to work with and negotiate this lease. By the way, folks, this is how I work through a problem, I actually have to hear myself speaking it out, just in case you wanted to know. It seems to me that I'm now supportive of my own motion, and, and in that sense, I think, I think it's helpful for us to hear that there might be others, it might be helpful for Mr. Hand to hear that there are others, because quite frankly, he may be looking for partners, I don't know. So at any rate, I think we should, in fact, in fact, move forward tonight. I realize that, you know, we could be playing people off each other, but it's really unfair to ask someone to put together a proposal, and they do, and then, and then, and then not act, in my view. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else would like to speak, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, how long ago did we ask the town to, just refresh my memory, I remember the conversation, did we actually ask the town to start negotiations?
When did we have, was that two, three, four months ago? I mean, it was quite some time ago.
Right.
At least four months, at least four months ago.
So it's been, this, it's been public that, that we were interested in this proposal possibly since at least that long. Yeah, I, I tend to, to agree with Bruce at this point, yeah, because this hasn't been done in a vacuum, it's been.
Well, the preferred site map has been out there for almost decades.
Right, exactly.
And the number of, we, it's not that people haven't come to the town and said, it's a nice spot, what they say is, it's going to cost a fortune to bring in three-phase power, so that's always been.
Thomas is the first one out of six, seven, eight solar developers who hasn't just gone, I'm out, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah, it's not for lack of conversations, it's just that it never gets to the point where anyone's taking it seriously. So, yeah, I mean, the preferred map, the preferred site map, is the thing that says, here's where you want to look for solar, and our landfill has been front and center. Yeah. I mean, we even had, when we were thinking about, you know, ARPA funds, it was like, should we consider putting in three-phase power so that that landfill would be more desirable? It didn't seem like a good use of, of the ARPA funds, but the, yeah, this is not a new, this is not a new idea.
Can I, I just want to make more?
Any idea, any more discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit. I'm in favor of this proposal, and I will vote on it tonight if I have, if we, and I will vote yes. But is there, my only concern is, I may think of something that I'm not thinking of at this moment, is there a real downside, and Dan, you might want to answer this question, to waiting until our next meeting, just so we have a chance to sleep on it and think about it? Or is, it, I, I don't want to give this person, or this company, the impression that we're not supportive of it, I think we are, and if you feel like that that is a really bad idea, I want you to tell, tell us.
I guess, I guess I would be hard-pressed to find out why you wouldn't be able to vote tonight, it's either, I would say vote yes or no tonight, because don't waste these people's time. We've worked in good faith to negotiate an agreement based on a proposal that you all said was acceptable, they spent a lot of time and effort, we spent a lot of time and effort paying for our attorney to review this. If you're in favor of it, great, if you're not, let's move on, that's what I would say.
That's what I needed to hear.
Any other discussion? Sarah?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of the site, of course, but now that a couple of people have come forward, I'm torn as to whether I can vote yes tonight. Being elected, I think there's people out there that feel that way as well, that we might have a better deal, so to say.
This isn't a deal, all this is doing is allowing.
That's, that's what I'm calling it, that's what I'm calling, yeah, so I, I think there are people out there that are thinking that way. So that's how I'm feeling, right, that I'm thinking, just that, those are my thoughts right now. Yeah, I'm, I'm torn, and I, I think that I need to think about this one more meeting, and that, that's how I'm, I don't think that I can go on this right now.
I do think that, I think, Dan, your comment, that there have been, you know, more than a handful of people that have come, that have said, oh, yeah, I want to think about that site, and then that's the end of it. I mean, that is a pattern, and we, we know that pattern. But, yes, go ahead.
I think Stuart's point about the fact that we have the proposal, we have the lease agreement in our hands, and that it's all public knowledge at this point, is a very valid point of, it's, someone said something about the cart before the horse, but I think we've got the cart, it's right here, and somebody else is, is going to benefit from that information, and it's easy to say, oh, well, you, you, you're going to pay a thousand, I'll do it for 1,500. And I don't think we want to get into that.
All right, so I think we've all shared our positions, right? So are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. Okay. Sorry, Sam, I, yeah, it happens, sorry, sorry.
The only thing it's good for is it's a green carpet footprint, that's very important.
It is good for the carpet.
And we all respect it, and I'll put it out.
Okay, so, all right, so, moving on, okay, we have done, I have done a terrible job of keeping us on time tonight. Okay, so implementing the town vision, I'm thinking there are two quick things, one, if you didn't get a chance to read Paul Dancero's memo on ADA work to date, and where he sees us moving in the future, it's not the plan, but it's a, it's just a, where we are right now, please do so, because it's really, really well-written. And then CPAR training is coming up, which will be open to the public, it's Thursday, August 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and it will be here, it will, CAT TV will film it, but it will not be filmed, it will not be live.
It won't be live.
Right? Okay. Other things under implementing the town vision?
No.
I think that's where we are. Okay, good, okay. All right, Stu, you're up, manager's report.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start out with some really good news that came to me late this afternoon. Mr. Cardoza surrendered to authorities this afternoon and is in custody.
Oh. Oh, good.
Where was he captured? He surrendered here in Bennington.
You need to say that a little bit louder, Stuart, thank you.
Mr. Cardoza, the alleged killer of the Pleasant Street individual, has surrendered and is in custody here in Vermont. Second thing, the BBC has asked to change the date of the Harvest Fest from October 8th to the 15th. I've checked with both BPD and the DPW folks, none of them have a problem with it, so I don't think it needs a formal action on the part of the board, you've already authorized the streets to be closed for that particular event, so I just wanted to make that announcement that that will be changing. Several other issues that were in my report, the staff will be putting together perhaps two events to distribute some 2,000 COVID test kits that have come to us through a Department of Health process for making these kits available to communities. They reached out to municipalities, libraries, and food shelves for these kinds of potential distribution efforts. We talked about it at staff, the staff agreed that we would like to participate, so we will be doing this. Dates have not yet been set, we will be distributing two kits per person, it does, it does allow up to four, but given that we were only able to receive just over 2,000, we feel that we can get greater numbers of people if we distribute only two kits per person. Those dates will be announced, dates and times, probably a daytime one and an evening, late afternoon, evening, one would be the way we'll do it, and we'll, we'll be doing it with employees who volunteer to, to provide the service. As you know, we talked the last time about parking at the community garden, and we were quite adamant that there'd be no parking on Bradford Street. As I prepared to order signs and direct my staff to take a look at other opportunities there, I realized that the Bradford Street parking is not restricted currently under ordinance on either side. So for the length of Bradford Street, you can legally park on either side of the street.
Actually, there is, there were two signs, there is one, there is one that says no parking between this sign and the other sign, but the other sign is not there.
And those, those signs may have been installed as a temporary situation, I can't find any record of where a formal action was taken, so we've got to, we are going to be, we're going to be placing signs under authority of the manager for up to 90 days, the ordinance allows us to do that, but in that timeframe, we will also have to take a look at the entire street. If it's too narrow there, it's probably too narrow throughout, and unfortunately, we have a number of streets in the community that allow parking on both sides of the streets, and they're probably too narrow for that as well. But for now, we'll be taking a hard look at Bradford Street the entire length to see whether or not parking should be restricted to one side or the other. So that is, will be a temporary situation, manager has the authority to do it for up to 90 days, and we will do that. And then the last piece is, I just want to announce that there are a number of paving projects that are going to be impacting Bennington. Route 279 from the New York border to Route 9, Route 7 from south of town, from Powell north into Bennington, not all the way through Bennington, but into Bennington, and then from Bennington at the Coker Drive intersection, north along Route 7 on the new highway. These are all interstate paving projects done by the state of Vermont, but we have received an announcement that they are coming, and I expect that if they, they will be happening this fall, so be prepared for some paving projects in and around Bennington.
Right during leaf season, right, Stu?
It is the only time to pave, isn't it, Bruce? The only time to pave.
You knew it.
So that's all I've got for this evening.
All right, all right, so upcoming agendas, what we know is that the opioid task force, Rick Berger and Alex Bigaro will be here next meeting. I'm not aware of anything else that's on the schedule.
We will have a presentation by Fidium.
Oh, Fidium, right.
The new, they're installing broadband throughout the community, and they're, I don't know if they're a subsidiary of Consolidated, but they have been, they have been awarded a contract to provide fiber throughout Bennington into Shaftesbury, into Powell, up into Woodford, and every home will have an opportunity, but they want to come and make a presentation about what they, they have accomplished and what they expect to offer come fall.
And they are contracted with the CUD, right?
Yes.
Right.
The CUD, yes, whatever that is.
Communications Union District.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Union District, yeah, so that's the connection there.
Utility District. Union, utility.
Or, no, you, Union, I believe.
It's CUD, it is CUD, Bruce.
Yeah, Union.
Would Willow Park?
All right, other business.
Would a Willow Park update be on next agenda, next meeting?
Uh, it, hmm.
Oh, it could be.
Possibly?
Yeah.
Well, we could, yeah, it won't be finished, Dan, you can, you've probably got your better handle on this.
Today, they're making good progress, and you can certainly go up and see, the structures are starting to rise. I don't think we'll be able to announce that it's done in two weeks for a couple of reasons. Just like everything else, there's supply issues, and they are having problems finding precast curbing for the edge of the playground area, so they're trying to find alternatives for that. But other than that, everything is moving forward very quickly, but we probably will not be able to announce its completion at the next meeting.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good, all right. Other business?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly share a story I heard. I ran into a woman at the coffee bar here in Bennington the other day, and she and her wife had been in town on vacation, and she expressed to me that they have been together for quite some time, every year they take a vacation somewhere, and Bennington was the first town they had ever visited together where they never once felt threatened or uncomfortable in any way, and I think that really speaks well of our community, so, thank you.
That is great.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, just one thing on the agenda that I'm looking forward to, and it's Battle Day weekend, we'll have a new reviewing stand, I'm sure it'll just be decked with coolers and beer tap and other sundries, so I'm looking forward to that.
Certainly.
And.
That's a joke.
Yeah.
That's a joke!
Yeah. But there are many events sponsored by the, the Fire Department leading up to Battle Day, including, you know, their regular chicken barbecue, their, what is it, Casino Night, among other things.
Watch.
And they do watch, yeah. So anyway, looking forward to the weekend, should be fun.
Food Truck Festival.
I don't have anything, I know it's shocking.
Are you going to do it? Yeah, yeah, vote!
Oh, my God, yeah, vote!
I, I was going to say something about voting after I said something about one other item.
Okay, go ahead.
But yes, don't forget to, if you, if you have not yet voted, if you even haven't yet registered, it is not too late to register, you may register tomorrow, and you may vote tomorrow.
Turn around, is that it?
Yes, all three, you, you get all three. And just the other thing, I happened to be down behind the New Putnam Block this afternoon, and enjoyed the installation of the new kiosk that is there, and if you have not seen it yet, it's really quite wonderful, and you might even learn something about Bennington that you didn't know already. So please find your way there, and go get a book and learn more, or, or get some coffee, but go out and see that, that's a really neat place, and I actually think it's, in the long run, that's going to be a really great location for that, so thank you for, for doing that.
Shannon Marsden.
Yep, and.
She did a great job.
I'm, I'm sure Shannon was involved, but I bet you she wasn't installing it.
So I just want to reiterate, everybody, you can pop back to me, sorry, stop that, back to the Food Truck Fest this Saturday, and if you haven't gotten your tickets for chicken barbecue, stop to the Fire Department and get those in the front, and remember to vote tomorrow.
Excellent, all right.
Yes, buy your raffle tickets.
But I have a, a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for a long meeting.